I'm writing on you, sorry.
Yeah.
Do you want mine?
That's probably yours.
Yes, all right. We're hot.
Ready to go.
It is 4:00 PM on November 1st, 2022, and this is the City of Iowa City Work Session. And the first item on our agenda is going to be the development of the fiscal year 2023 through 2028, City of Iowa City Strategic Plan with Facilitation Services provided by the East Central Iowa Council of Governments. And we're going to just jump right in there. We're going to welcome you to start this conversation.
Mayor, I'm actually going to, I'm going to actually give a quick intro, just kind of recapping the cover memo that I have in, and then I'll turn it over to Karen and Jessica from EC Cog to, to help you through the discussion today. But excited to be here. Hopefully, you're excited. We started this process back in March, and we can kind of see the finish line hopefully here. This builds, this five-year plan builds off the previous two-year plans very well, in my, in my view. A lot of the same themes and focus areas are carrying over. What excites me about this is I think the attention to the vision statements and to the values this time around are really impactful. I think that's going to really help articulate where you want to be in five years. It also helps us as staff and really envision our role in this strategic plan, too. So thank you for your efforts in those areas. You'll see that the action steps, I would, I would categorize are aggressive and aim to tackle some of our most complex challenges that we face, whether that's housing, childcare, social justice, and more. And I certainly applaud you for that. New to this strategic plan was the environmental scan section. We haven't really, hadn't really taken the time to do that in the previous two-year plans. And I appreciated the council opening that opportunity for, for staff to offer some thoughts. And, you know, one thing that we really wanted to convey was some of the challenging times ahead in terms of some financial headwinds that we expect to face with the final phase in of the property tax reform, with the inflationary environment that we have. We're already feeling those pressures on our budget now. And then remember, there's always a lag between development and, and property tax base. And so when you're coming out of those COVID years where we had slow build of our tax base, we're going to feel those in the same next few years that those other headwinds are hitting us. So we do have some, some more challenging times ahead. Thankfully, we've prepared well from a financial standpoint to, to hit those head-on. The environmental scan also identified some of the service needs that we have. And if you look back at the census data from 2010 to 2020, we grew about 7,000, according to the Census Bureau. I think you've heard me say before, I think that's probably an undercount, and, and I'd like to say it's probably closer to eight or nine. That's the equivalent of Solon and Tiffin combined, the entire communities. So those pressures on our services are real. And because we were navigating some of the financial challenges with, with the property tax reform, we really haven't done a whole lot of service expansion. We've asked our employees to, to do a little bit more with the growing population, and we can't do that forever. So that's just one more thing that gets thrown into the blender here, if you will. We've got some, again, aggressive goals that you've set. We also have to be mindful of our own financial structure. We don't want to lose that strong standing we've had. And then we, we're going to have to invest more in our services and, in our facilities. All that said, I think it's, I think it's very doable. It's going to require some focus. It's going to require us to constantly check in on this and make sure that we're making progress on the, on the specific items that we've identified. And your staff is anxious to, to, to have this implemented and get to work on it. A few final comments before turning it over to EC Cog to, to help you through this. One is, the world's a lot different today than it was five years ago, and we have to expect that the world five years from today will be a lot different. So at the same time, I'm preaching focus. We all just have to know that we have to be adaptable, too. And circumstances will change, priorities may change. And I, I know that you all will be open to that, that, that change, and, and your staff will be, too. But we just have to expect that, especially as we move from a two-year to a five-year plan. So I think I'll, I think I'll stop there. Our, our hope is that you can get through this final step tonight. But of course, if you need more time, we can schedule that. If, if we can remain on track, we would look to bring the final plan to you at your December 6th meeting for, for adoption. So we'll see how far we get today. As a reminder, you've kind of, through your previous meetings, you focused on these, each, each of these individual sections. And you've, you've kind of taken deep dives into these sections. You've prioritized. This is really the first time you, as a group, have had a chance to look at it as a whole and discuss it as a whole, how all those pieces fit together. And so I'll turn it over to Karen now, and she's going to have some introductory remarks. And then I think we'll jump right into those action steps and see if there's some changes you want to make.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Hello.
I'm back.
Welcome.
Yes.
And so I have just a few introductory remarks that I think are largely going to parallel some of what, what Jeff was talking about. So obviously, at this point, you've seen this graphic before, and it's just, again, describing the process for people that might not be familiar, that we've gone through to date, and we started this process back at March. There's been a lot of feedback, both in terms from the council and staff, that's brought us to where we are here today. And then this is just that slide that kind of highlights the new strategy map. As Jeff had mentioned, you know, really, these were themes that were present in your previous strategic plans, just been repackaged slightly to reflect some, some sort of different emphasis in different areas. And so then, of course, with this version of your strategic plan, we're really delineating that vision with respect to our impact areas and our resources and values, specific strategies you'll be using in each of those areas, and then action steps, which are actually your to-do list of what you want to accomplish in the next five years. And then we are dredging out some slides that, you might remember these from the, the first session that we did. And these were slides that were specifically for, for you here in Iowa City, as we had gone through our introductory sessions with both the council and staff. And we were kind of thinking about sort of the balancing that you would, you would need to be doing as an organization and as elected leaders as you move forward. And so you were blessed with a community that's highly engaged and full of great ideas. And we saw that as, as we prioritized the 300 potential action steps that just the staff and, and council had brainstormed. So for you, I think as you're moving forward beyond this plan, you know, you're going to have to kind of continue to balance that, you know, the excitement to, to really dig in and, and move full steam ahead with the, the variety of ideas and challenges before you, with that need to prioritize and potentially say no to some things, because saying no, we think in your case is going to be just as important as saying yes to be successful. And you've, you're all really super familiar with this graphic at this time, so it's really that constant thinking about effort versus impact and what's going to help us for our, for the resources we have, both human and financial, what's going to help us to advance that vision the most down the road? And as Jessica and I were talking about this a little bit, she probably doesn't even want to be associated with this at this point, but we were, you were brainstorming like, what, what's the analogy? So forgive us, we're going to use a little bit of a cheesy analogy, but sometimes it helps. So if we're to think about a river, and you've got some different types of boats out there, and these boats are all different potential ideas, and you're trying to get down river to, to your, to your vision. So you've got your barges, right? These, these are big things. It's slow-moving, but at the end of the day, it's going to accomplish a lot. It's going to really move things, a lot of stuff down river, or, or something significant down river. And you've got your speedboats. So your speedboats aren't going to carry a lot, but they're, they're, they're of those quick ones. Then you have your sailboats, which we love them. They're a little bit of a labor of love. And, and they're, they will get down river, but it certainly is going to take more time and energy and may not have the same impact that the previous two had by the time you hit that finish line. And so generally, the, the more boats you're loading on this river, the more it's going to slow it down for everybody. So that's something to think about as you move forward. I would also say that sometimes there's a barge, but maybe you're not the, you're not the right people to lead that, that barge. There's another institution that's better suited to take leadership on that. And you, as the city, you know, you're kind of the tugboats alongside, helping out where you can. So anyway. We had also talked about this idea that as city officials, you know, you can impact your, your community in numerous ways, but there are specific areas where really you, you are really the only ones positioned to take the lead role. And we talked about areas like public safety, land use, public works and infrastructure as being critical areas for you. As Jeff has already kind of highlighted, your staff was excited about this strategic plan and committed to the, the priorities that you had, you had set previously. But capacity is something that you'll just need to be mindful of as you're moving forward. And then again, the, the financial piece of it, and I know you're kind of about to head into your budget, budget cycle, so you'll, you'll be becoming more mindful of that as you kind of dig deeper into that. And, and like Jeff said, you know, a, a plan is the best roadmap based on what we know now. It will inevitably change, and adaptations will need to be made as you start to pair up resources with, with the objectives that you've, you've outlined. So to be prepared for that. So that was really it for my introductory remarks. We did forward to the draft plan based on the, the work we had done in the previous sessions. I think that the only thing that I would really highlight is perhaps a semi-significant change. I don't know if it's really significant, but from previous sessions is that we had really talked about sort of Phase 1, Phase 2, action steps. But as we started to kind of get feedback from staff, and we were noticing that they were putting year ranges in, we decided that maybe it made sense to just eliminate that. That distinction was helpful for us as we were going through the process, to be able to determine what was more of a priority to you early in the plan. But in the final plan itself, it didn't seem like it was that useful, so we just combined the action steps into one table. And so with that, we can proceed through it by, by section? Or Mayor, if there's a different approach you would like to take?
Yeah, I want to, thanks again, Karen and the EC Cog team for all of your work in helping the council and staff in our community navigate through this. I think what we might do is just start with council. If anyone has any questions, based on the final draft that we see?
I have a really basic question. So you were just saying how the tables of the action steps were, you know, oriented a little differently. When we were doing a lot of the prioritization, we were obviously putting the priority, like, most impactful on top, and these appear to be chronological. Is that right? From top to bottom is how they're represented here? Okay. And are, I was just thinking visually, there's not any representation of, of that, like, the weight we were putting on an individual thing. It's more in the, closer to further in the future, yeah?
Correct. So if you're talking about the grids that we had done, the impact effort grids, we had intended that to just be a tool as you were going through prioritization, but we didn't include that in the final report, although we certainly can.
No, I, I was looking at this, and my husband was looking over my shoulder, and he's like, oh, is that the most important thing? I'm like, no, that's the most next in-line thing in terms of time. So I just wanted to make sure I was understanding that correctly. Thank you.
First of all, thanks. This has been a good process. I've really, thanks to, to all of you guys, all of staff, and my fellow council members. One thing I was doing as I was reading through this is I was trying to think of like, what would it be like for somebody who hasn't been sitting through the process with us? So as I, this as a document to communicate. And one, one thing that jumped out at me, and I really love like, the way that the, the vision statements were worded, but I'm wondering if, if it wouldn't be worth a little something to say, to explain, because we all know that's our vision of what success looks like. But if you didn't have that knowledge coming in, it could be a little bit confusing, because it talks about all these things that sound really great, but somebody who maybe hasn't been watching, following along the whole time might look at it and say, well, this isn't Iowa City. And of course not, that's why it's our vision plan. But I was wondering if maybe just rhetorically, it makes sense to do something, to have something, you know, to kind of make it clear to a first-time reader that this is our vision of success, or this is what success looks like, or something like that. Again, just trying to, to limit confusion, because again, we're, we're also close to it. We all know exactly what it, what it means. So, so that was something that, that kind of just jumped out through me.
Are you thinking just even retitling, something as simple as retitling it, vision of success?
I'm open to, yeah, whatever. I mean, others might have a good idea on, on what that would look like or what that would make sense, without making it like an extra, you know, like too verb, too, too, too many words, too verbose, but something.
Right. I mean, when, at the beginning, when you describe the strategy map, it talks about values and, and sort of the vision is part of the values. Maybe there's a way to just add a sentence or two in there for the visions, the visions describe the, the ideal, or however we want to say it, but basically what, what Counselor Clarkson was talking about.
Sorry. I think that makes sense. I think something like a heading in each vision, like our vision of success, because I'm thinking, we look at these things carefully, but I think a lot of people will skim the document. And so they might not read through all the, you know, the introduction, they'll skip right to the, with, you know, what would be the meat of the, of the document, and so.
It's a good point. We can, we can do that. So what I, I might suggest, if there's not, if there's not wordsmithing that needs to be done with the values and the, and the strategies, that's okay if, if you do have some word changes, this is, this is the time to do it. But we did a lot of that with the last round. You might jump right into the actual action steps. And so that would start, if you're looking at your IP packet, it'd be page 21 of your IP, or page 10 of the report would be the first set, and that's your Neighborhood and Housing Action Plan. And again, these are, these are listed kind of chronologically on what we think we might get started with first. We did try to take your tiers into consideration here, but we want to make sure that we've captured everything here. If you expected to see something that you're not seeing, we can, we can go back and check to make sure we didn't miss it. Or if there's dates that you'd really like to see something started sooner rather than later, that would be helpful.
You provided a really good segue, actually, so I'm just going to jump in, if I may.
Sure.
Or do you want to, Paulie?
Oh, I was just going to say on, on those lines, and maybe you'll, you'll say something similar, is that the item that says bolster financial support for homeless services and substitutes shift staffing towards shelter and service model. It says, of course, your office, 25 to 28. I'd like to see that, you know, starting even 23, and then through 28, because it, it just seems like that's really become an issue. We'd gotten an email recently about some homeless camps in, in the city that people were concerned about. And I, I just think it's a big issue, and maybe make it more 23 to 28. Okay, sorry.
No, no, that's good. My question actually had to do with, it's the one, two, three, the fourth goal, advance prioritized recommendations in the 2022 Affordable Housing Action Plan, and then work with partners to undertake significant-scale affordable housing efforts. And I was just wondering if some of, if I'm remembering some of our discussions, I thought those were two separate goals. And it's certainly fine to, if they seem to align, to condense them. But those team, in and of itself, those seem like two large tasks. And so I was wondering if it makes sense to break those up again? Or if because they're significantly aligned as staff and as EC Cogs, as you guys worked through finalizing it, if it seemed like they, they fit together well? Because in my memory, it was a little bit different.
Yeah, that's, I made some changes there, I think, as we were going through the staff edits. I, I put them together largely because it's going to be the same team working on those. I also stripped out, you had some language, said using, I think, ARPA or ARPA Capital or Bonding Funds or something. You, you specified types of funds, and I didn't really think that that was critical for a report like this, because ultimately, we're going to develop strategies for each of these action items. So we did take some liberties with rewording these, trying to clean up some, some things where we can. They can be separated if you feel like they need separate attention, but it's going to be largely the same team of staff working on those. So we, we felt they went well together.
I was curious to why the, the next one, right under, which talks about C-COT and approved residential TIF applications for infrastructure, what, why? Just curious why that's assigned to the city manager's office?
A couple, a couple reasons. Capacity and NDS is an, is an issue. It's going to be really hard for, there's a lot of planning items throughout this entire, throughout this entire report. And even with, even with what's assigned to them now, they're going to, they're going to be really challenged to, to, to keep things on track. Remember, we're, we're still a growing community, and, and part of their basic job is just to process building permits and applications that come in. So they're going to struggle to do that. We also do most of the TIF work in our office and with legal and finance. Most of that's economic development-related. But we're familiar in the, in the TIF realm, so this was just an area I thought that we could kind of take some load off of NDS and, and work on that ourselves.
Thanks.
And maybe just for my benefit, is there consensus around changing the dates on bolstering financial support for human services and shifting to a shelter as service model? Was that?
I mean, we, we have, we have a work session coming up on that, I believe. I mean, I personally would support moving it forward, but it's sort of weird, because we're about to, we're about to discuss it, but it seems like the issue is definitely out there in the, and, and we're aware of it in the community. And it would make sense to, to me to, to prioritize it at this point.
I can tell, the reason that I, I think the reason that, that I selected, so I went through and I tried to assign dates to all these. That was largely my, my task. We are in fiscal year '23 right now, so we're six months into fiscal year '23. We're prepping for fiscal year '24 right now through the budget standpoint. I see this item as having a very hefty price tag, very hefty, and not necessarily one that you can tackle with ARPA funds, right? That's a point in time, that's a one-time expense. You're not going to find one-time dollars to solve the homeless challenges that we have in our community. So the, really, the reason I put fiscal year '25 is because I think we're going to need some time for financial planning and possibly talking about a different revenue source to fund it. That's, that's how significant this, this, this item is in my eyes. And, and we may need to, to get alignment on what this means to you versus staff, but I just felt it was going to be very difficult to, to really get there in, certainly this year, but, but next fiscal year. That doesn't mean we're not continuing to work on the issue as we have over and over again the last many years. But, but that's the reason behind the fiscal year '25 start.
So if I'm understanding it correctly, it's really a matter of, in terms of, because this is the strategic plan, the goal of bolstering services, I mean, that's like, that's digging in, that's, as you just said, something really substantial. Whereas our ongoing effort for this current year, in the next months and next year, are, are more like, we're going to continue to find ways to help as best we can with the revenue source that we have. But this is much bigger in scale, right? So is that the best way to understand that? So it's not like, oh, we're just going to wait?
Right. It's, it's definitely not, you just sit back and wait. But for example, Tracy and I right now are reviewing the, the proposal for the eviction prevention program that, that we've identified through ARPA. That's going to be a million-dollar-plus program using one-time funds. That certainly speaks to this, right? That's about keeping people housed and keep, keeping people, preventing people from falling into homelessness. That'll be a significant investment, presumably, that this council makes when it comes to housing. And that'll happen this fiscal year, I, I think. And, and so that's an example of something that's going to help, that's going to continue to push forward. But again, what I see in this item is more of a permanent commitment, is, is saying we are permanently going to fund this at a higher level. And I don't think we're talking, you know, tens of thousands here. I think we're in a whole different kind of stratosphere. So again, that's something we need to start to explore. We'll do that at the next work session, is kind of a good intro to that. But it's going to be hard to come up with the resources in short order.
I, I had a question on the, I think would be the next item here on the initiating comprehensive plan update and subsequent zoning code, that, that action item. You know, we had a number of different ways in which that was expressed, I think, during the previous work sessions. And so my, one of my questions was, given the language, you know, my, one of my concerns at previous work sessions was the idea of completing the form-based code for the core neighborhoods, the north side in particular. And where does that stand based on the language I'm seeing here?
Yeah, so this, this language, you know, growth areas first and then infill second was part of that prioritization process. So that's, what this articulates is that we would do a completely new comprehensive plan for the entire city, which means we, we could do a pilot program while you have a, a comp plan change going. But typically, probably, I would say you probably wouldn't do that in, in normal order. So if you want to do a pilot form-based code program for the core neighborhoods, that should be, in my view, that should be articulated in fiscal, you know, before this project starts. I think, I think that's.
As a separate action item, you mean?
Yeah, as a separate action item.
Well, that, that would be then what I would propose if we weren't going to change that language. You know, I, I prepared some notes on this. It's, you know, the, I don't know if I want to read through them, but, you know, I have spoken to this issue numerous occasions. And, you know, I've tried to look at this both, you know, in terms of the, you know, the lens of the, of the strategic plan, but also just information, you know, that I've been gleaning, the neighborhoods have been gleaning, the core neighborhoods have been gleaning regarding, you know, the need for having some controls over development. First of all, I would define. First of all, I would define, you know, this question of growth versus infill, I think is kind of an interesting way in which to frame development because what, what I would argue is the core neighborhoods have never been exempt from change and redevelopment, so they have always been going through ongoing growth incrementally. You know, it's not like it's a subdivision out on the edge of town with covering 75 acres. But I would, you know, I think all of us would agree that perhaps no neighborhood in Iowa City over the history of this town has gone through more change. Initially relatively minor incremental change until roughly 50 years ago when, for various reasons, the, you know, the core neighborhoods saw what I would call radical change when the multifamilies were introduced to the core neighborhoods at a fairly high density. You know, RM 44 is quite a bit higher than, say, RS8, which is itself even higher than RS5, so, you know, anywhere from a five-time increase in density to something greater than that. One thing we've, I've learned recently is that, you know, and it's been confirmed in many towns, and that is that with that growth came considerable wealth to the city of Iowa City. The, the value of the lands on a per acre basis in the core of Iowa City are considerably higher than most other lower-density, single-family neighborhoods and, you know, the university urban planning program, you know, did a study of that, the, the report is still in a draft form, we're trying to finish it up, but they compared the, the value per acre of the north side to, to neighborhoods, Weber and Windsor Ridge, and the value per acre was significantly higher, more than three times the value per acre than in, than in the Weber and Windsor Ridge neighborhoods. How that adds to the conversation in my mind is that it means that, you know, the, the core neighborhoods have been a wealth generator and they will continue to be a wealth generator, partly due to their location, but also just their, the way their infrastructure is laid out. They will undergo constant change. This is one of the things that, you know, has been noted is that, that's quite unlike the way most of our residential neighborhoods are structured. They, they grow, they provide growth and then they're kind of stuck in whatever form that initial development took place. And by stick, by, by being stuck, their value hasn't increased in the same way the core neighborhoods have. So what I, what I would be, what I'm suggesting is that it is important that we, we, we complete the form-based code process. We're, we're almost there, I think, at our last work session. I mentioned that I had contacted Tony Perez with Opticos and he felt it was a relatively minor process to, to complete it, six pages of text is how he described it. I've spoken with who, I'm forgetting her name at the moment, but Opticos has opened an office in Chicago and is familiar with the work in Iowa City and is interested in doing the work. The way I see it now, because of the, the continual pressures that we are experiencing in the core neighborhoods, we can, we can see on the, in the recent interventions by, by the state, which removed all occupancy controls, is that, you know, as a city council, we, we could consider whether to promote growth that incentivizes, continues to incentivize high-density occupancy for short-term residents, which arguably are not consistent with our comprehensive plan, which I'm referring to there, the central district 2007 plan, and also can be inconsistent with neighborhood context. Or do we try through a form-based code to incentivize diverse affordable housing options that would be consistent with the comprehensive plan and the neighborhood context? That seems to me, the form-based code would be the foundation of that zoning framework that would allow us to accomplish that. And as I said, we're almost there, you know, it, it would not be a heavy lift. The heavy lift was with the south district. That's provided in our, in our zoning code, all the language we need in which to introduce a form-based code concept. What we would need to do is look at the, the actual zoning codes that would apply to the core neighborhoods as we define it and we could build off those codes, those zoning classifications that are in the south district. So it, it seems to me, again, we're starting down that road. I think it, it's a road that's productive in terms of land use and it's especially productive and critical, I would argue, in the core neighborhoods because of how they are just designed to, to experience continuous change, which is quite unlike most, most of the other residential neighborhoods in Iowa City. And hopefully we can move that wealth forward and, and in ways which will not create the issues that have followed in, in the wake of some of that change. You know, much of what we've seen in the last 50 years has created some destabilization in the core neighborhoods. So if we can avoid that while promoting affordable housing and moving forward in terms of our social justice initiatives, I think the form-based code plays a role in that.
Can I ask a question of Jeff, I guess? Would this also fall under neighborhood and development? Would they own?
Yeah, if we went this route, I mean, I, I, at a very high level, I think you have to decide if you want to take a neighborhood by neighborhood approach, which is largely what we've been doing, kind of updating district plans and, you know, we did the south district neighborhood and, and talking about the core neighborhood. We can continue to do that and there's nothing wrong with that. Some of the other items you envisioned in here or that we've at least discussed that we'd like to explore, like minimum density allowances, greater by right housing types in all zoning codes, that's really a big picture comprehensive plan change. So in our, in our, in staff's view, some of those bigger picture changes need, need to start at a comp plan and it would be the same staff. So if we want to do neighborhood by neighborhood, let's decide where we want to spend that focus, let's put our staff on that and then when they're done, maybe we take, take the step out and we do the, they do the larger comprehensive one. That's not all going to get done in a five-year period. I think with all due respect to, to Tony at Opticos, we do not feel that this is a six-page simple process in the north side. We think it's frankly fairly complicated and that there's maybe some things that Opticos isn't considering when, when providing you that commentary. So we, we would see it's a much more detailed effort to go through and do a core neighborhood form-based code pilot, but, you know, that's something that we could explore. If the council wants us to work with Opticos again, we could explore that with them or another consultant.
I have a question relating to where it says broadly incorporate form-based code principles.
It's basically a shift to entire, our entire code to form-based code.
Okay.
That's, that's what, many cities will take that approach as opposed to what we've done neighborhood by neighborhood so far with riverfront crossings, could argue with peninsula riverfront crossings and, and south district. They're just going to put form-based code principles throughout their entire code. So your, your, your zoning categories apply across the board. That's what that would mean.
So is the, the intent is by 2028, the entire city would have, I'll just use the term form-based code?
That would be the intent.
Okay, sure.
Even that's pretty bold, to go through a comp plan amendment is, is maybe a couple of years and then you're going through zoning code changes too. And when you're basically rewriting your entire zoning code, that's a, that's definitely a multi-year process, but within the realm of possibility over five years.
I guess to the question that, that has been presented, do we go to kind of the north side and, and use them, I would say as a, kind of as a pilot, although we already have, you know, some form-based codes out there. I'm not opposed to it, except I do have, your analogy, I got a little loss. I'm, I'm hoping that you are not suggesting that because they pay three times higher per acre, that they are deserving of the city's investment. I'm not, I'm not sure if that's what you were.
Well, what I was, what I was trying to, to draw attention to is, is that the core neighborhoods are a wealth generating portion of Iowa City. You know, they, particularly when you consider it in terms, in relative to other single-family post-World War II neighborhoods. And that generally isn't understood. You know, most people look at the core neighborhoods, you know, you drive through the core neighborhoods and you would tend to look at them and say, this isn't a thriving neighborhood, you know, there's some, some issues here, whereas if you were to go to Windsor Ridge, you know, that's, that's a nice neighborhood, that's, this is a thriving neighborhood. The issue that I was trying to draw attention to is that, that who is benefiting from these two different approaches that, that many cities have taken with regard to land value in their city and that, you know, where you have that higher density, the wealth is generated typically. It may not be what people prefer in terms of, you know, the way in which they would like to, to reside. You know, there's clearly a desire to, on money people's part, to live at lower densities, the RS5 densities that you see in Windsor Ridge, say. The question is, you know, when you, is when you start looking at the land values that they generate.
Yeah. I, I'm not sure that I would throw that analogy in the circumstance.
Yeah, it's not really an analogy, it's just an acknowledgement of the differences in land cost or land values.
I, I get that.
I don't mean it. Can John bid mayor? I'd like to just kind of maybe bring us back to the strategic plan and the question on the table, as I understand it, which is, do we want to take a more, you know, sooner but limited approach for the core neighborhoods or specifically the north side on the form-based code, or do we want the overall comprehensive plan redo with form-based code in that? I prefer the latter and I think we've already discussed that as a group and that's why this item is in here and the other was not. So I, to put on my lawyer hat, we're relitigating this and I, I don't want to, you know, we can, we can until it's done, right? But I, I think, I think we've had that conversation and I stay with where we landed previously. I appreciate what you're saying, John, as a policymaker. I totally understand the core neighborhoods generate all this wealth. I remember in 2018, the heat map that the downtown district put out that showed the whole community that was like tax generation with these big spikes in the core neighborhoods and like, you know, piddling out towards the edges. So I think we do think about that and it does matter, but it, it's, I think we should have a, a plan for an overall redo rather than the spots that we've been undertaking.
If I could just quickly respond to that. You know, I, I don't disagree with the idea of a more comprehensive approach, although it may be, as I was suggesting, certain parts of Iowa City may be significantly more resistant to the change that I think, you know, to a form-based code, what, what difference will that make in certain neighborhoods in terms of their future? The form has been set in many of these neighborhoods and it may not change, but, but to your point, part of what I, what I was trying to emphasize, aside from the wealth generation, is that the north, the core neighborhoods, in effect, we could use the north side as the pilot because we understand it a little better in terms of the status of our work. You know, we are feeling, because of the changes the state legislature made, under more threat, that's an immediate threat. That's not something two years away. We're seeing it happening right now. And so that's, that's why I would ask that we, we look at it on a, on a more, you know, a timeframe that is more closer to the, to the present because of that immediate threat. And as I was also trying to emphasize, the, the core neighborhoods is a different beast than the rest of Iowa, Iowa City's residential neighborhoods. But I would say the, the issue here again is from a timeframe, we are seeing development that is not consistent with the character and it's, it's, it's not furthering our goal, which I hope all of us agree, would be trying to create opportunities for affordable housing throughout Iowa City. And the foundation for that, as I said, is a form-based code. So there, there is a cer, certain time urgency that I'm feeling, which is why I'm asking if we can, you know, pursue it on a, at an earlier date.
So I, Councilor Burgess, I appreciate you bringing up the fact that we did discuss this in great detail. And, and I mean, I, I, you know, do agree with you, John, that there is, there's things happening at the state, you know, that, you know, can impact some of the things that we do in the future. I agree. And for the core neighborhood, that could not be to our advantage if we wait. I am okay with kind of, you know, keeping it all in one and not doing what was previously suggested as kind of that pilot. Because I know we did go through this and I think that the council did kind of give the, I, I was supportive then, I'm supportive now, but I do think the council did go through this process and said, no, but again, if someone wants to, you know, jump in and support and, well, for, we can certainly do that at this time.
I mean, I, I think that we may, if you look at the state legislature, we may, again, put ourselves at risk if we single out one neighborhood that doesn't, that's not, that, that yes, I mean, we see that it's somewhat different, but others may not, and I think there are a lot of specific interests who, property owners and others have interest in the north side and the core neighborhoods. I think we'd, we would potentially be under much less threat if we sort of do the whole grid at one time and saying we're not singling out one part of the city. It was, it made sense to do the south district, new area, it made sense to do riverfront crossings because it was a, it was, it's like brownfield, it was really, we were really encouraging it being redesigned, but I worry about, frankly, about state intervention if we sort of, if we pick and choose right now.
I mean, I'm hearing that, it sounds like the time is really the issue and it's really a matter of we want, what I'm hearing, if we want to trade off. So if we want to make the entire city wait longer, we, we would go in and do, focus on one neighborhood. If we make the entire city come quicker, that neighborhood will have to wait a little bit longer. And so I think that's kind of what we're, we're really at the, the core of the time and, I don't know, to me, it makes sense to try and kind of do it all together. I think Janice made a good point about, you know, we're up here trying to second guess what will, what will come out of Des Moines and that's one of our legislative challenges that we're facing and we are, it is a, it is an interesting place to be, so.
This seems to be coming up at meetings every so often, these, I think back historically when John and I were on the council and things would come up and we'd be told, next time around or sometime around, and I do recall that we talked about form-based code for the north district and with all appreciation, Councilor Weiner, to the fact that south district was a new sort of district and the rear front crossing was a, was actually a new district. I, I believe, I recall that we were told that north district would be next, that we would be looking at a form-based code for the north district. But kind of sounds like that's almost the only one remaining besides like the far east, which they haven't really talked about wanting a form-based code. So if you're talking, Jeff, about doing a comprehensive plan for everyone, then perhaps it is at that time, then we look and see who doesn't have anything, which would be the north district and I would hope that they would kind of have a priority for input on that.
Yeah, basically the rest of the community doesn't, not just the north side, nor the core neighborhoods.
Right, right.
Absent those other areas I've talked about, we didn't, and you're right, the council has talked multiple times about doing one in the north side, about north side marketplace versus the residential areas. We've never gotten to the point where we've, we've pulled the trigger, so to speak. As you may remember, the, the, the last shift in direction was we took the south district code and we're trying to put that over the Carson Farm area, basically that, that southwest district, that's, that was the task that our staff is currently working on now. That's going to P and Z right now and will come your way. And that's an example of, again, us just taking the south district form-based code. us just taking the South District form-based code and trying to apply it to a new area, growth area, much like this plan articulates, applying it to growth areas first. And that's been over a year effort from our staff to create that. So it's, none of these issues are easy. How you prioritize them is fine with us, we'll make it work. But to get to your more ambitious, affordable housing goals, when it comes to the form and densities and things like that, you've got to start with the comp plan. So it's how quickly you want to get to that stage.
One of the things that I'm coming back to, and that I'm mindful of, is how we began, actually, between you and Jeff, and talking about sort of like, how do we deal with the environmental scan, and in relation to the strategic plan, and these lofty goals, that we need to be focused, we need to be disciplined, we need to say no, more than we need to, that's as important, and that we have to have regular assessment and reassessment. And so I liked very much what Councilor Harmson talked about, where it's sort of like, it's sort of like, which slice of a larger whole, do we want to put a smaller piece first to get it done, with respect to the counselors who've been on for a long time, and talking about this coming up, the north-based, the core neighborhoods pilot. But I think that we've got this five-year plan, which in the scope of things, is actually not that much time. And if we're disciplined, and we can say, in five years, we've managed to get the whole city accounted for within this form-based code, that includes the core neighborhoods, and it provides a roadmap for how the whole city can continue to grow, whether through infill, through core neighborhood, and our growth areas. So, and I am absolutely mindful that this has come up a couple of times, and there is very good argument for this. I just think that we're looking at a strategic plan, and right now, I have to say honestly, I'm more uncomfortable by saying, let's start slicing it even finer, given what we need to accomplish. The core neighborhood will be part of this, it just won't be called out in its own. But the idea is that this will be done in five years, of which the core will be part of that. So I'm not seeing it as a loss, it's just it's not being called out as its own individual because it's smaller in scope. I think we should actually go for a comprehensive, so.
I just want to, I just want to mention, I hear what you're all saying. But let's, you know, let's, you know, this idea, let's not do any more specific plans, in effect. Let's just do a comprehensive plan. Well, just in the last few years, we've expanded our riverfront crossing zones on the west side of the river, in Miller Orchard, a couple of times. Now we're looking over at Carson Farm, that's a specific plan for a particular area. We did some code changes to the Near East Side, around, you know, just east of Gilbert Street. So we have done numerous, small-scale, specific plans, form-based code-related. All the while, you know, the issue of the North Side, or what I would argue the core neighborhoods, has been out there and has not moved forward. So, you know, if we included in this five-year plan, great, as I said, I'm seeing, whenever there's a sense of urgency, and maybe it's over growth, as opposed to growth, but addressing some of the, you know, the issues that have been associated with growth in the core neighborhoods, you know, it's just a matter of responding to those issues. And we have responded with numerous specific plans to do form-based codes over the last few years. So, you know, I'm happy to see we're looking at it comprehensively, but I'm also seeing that at the same time, we're cherry-picking certain parts of Iowa City for form-based codes, as it's felt needed.
Thanks to everyone for having that conversation. What we'll do is, are there any more action items that people want to just bring forth at this time?
Completely, over the whole.
Any of them?
Just this, I mean, this page or all?
This or all, yes, because we have more to go through.
Sure. So one question that I had that might actually help sort of bring a bunch of different conversations into the mix, is that I was looking at the champions, that column, under all of the different action categories, or the categories for action. And I was wondering, in a broad, sweeping, yet specific way, are there ways in which we, the council and/or staff, sees the council as being more active in being champions? Like, we own a couple of things where, and we discussed it during strategic planning, that we could use sort of our position and our influence to have conversations with other, you know, regional entities, right? So that's one clear-cut place. But I was just thinking, this is a tremendous lift for staff, it is really ambitious. Are there ways in which we can step in, in effect, to be champions in certain, you know, if not owners, not actually in there, sort of having those execution meetings, but are there ways in which we can step up and help?
Yeah, so you do have a couple of actions assigned to you. If you skip ahead to mobility, we talk about crandic and regional transit, really starting with your leadership and your connection with your elected peers across the county. Most of these other items will require council action at some point. And our really, our next step is, once you finalize these action items, is to build kind of the plans that go along, the execution plans or implementation plans for each one. So what kind of budget authorities needed, are there additional staffing that's needed, all those types of questions. And then we'll come back to you. So just because you don't see your name as the champion.
Right.
It doesn't mean that you won't have some important milestone decisions to make along the way.
Certainly. I just wondered if there was anything.
Yeah, I think if you see anything else that's not listed at City Council that you'd really like to have, you know, let me know, and.
Exactly.
There may be a role, there may be a role, particularly when it comes to shaping policies or priorities. Like, for example, if you wanted to take that affordable housing plan, which, you know, we presented to you in a quick work session, and it has thirty-some recommendations, if you wanted to be involved in prioritizing those, absolutely, that would be, that would be a wonderful role for the council to play. You don't need that, absent that, your staff's going to prioritize, based on what we think you would do, and bring that forward to you. But if you see some of those types of things, there can absolutely be a bigger role for council to play.
I just wanted to add quickly on this, on this particular area, that I recognize it's chronological, but I'm really happy to see the exploring legal steps to discourage or prevent bad faith in predatory property investors at the top.
Yes.
So navigating through more action plan items for mobility, it's on page 12. Yep.
Well, one that came to my attention was on the snow removal issue, which is shown as a fiscal year 25 start. You know, I was looking at that, and I was trying to compare it with some of the other items related to mobility. Oh, further up the list, install additional permanent charging stations for vehicles, bicycles, and electronic devices. You know, and that's starting '23. You know, what I would suggest is, you know, we could look at this as something where we're trying to develop what I would call a active mobility transition plan, that would begin sooner than fiscal year '25. So we roll it out, so to speak, and get started sooner than '25. That's, you know, I'm, '25 seems like a ways out for me, to at least start working on this issue. Because it relates to trying to promote active mobility for, as a, you know, distinct from the auto-oriented approach, whether it's busing, you know, the bus system, bicycling, or walking. You know, it's, those are the options that it would be nice to see moving forward, at least taking steps moving forward. And I guess I'm looking at fiscal year '25 as kind of a break, a pretty significant break in terms of that action.
If I could just ask for a point of clarification, I think you, Jeff, you may have mentioned this earlier, but I want to kind of make sure that I got it right. If we see fiscal year '23, we're in fiscal year '23, and so those are ongoing, current efforts that are just big and will take a long time, or never really end. Fiscal year '24 is the budget that staff is working on now that we'll have before us.
Starting July 1 of '23.
And then fiscal year '25 would be then.
July 1 of '24.
The budget that you'll be working on a year from now, right? So I can just make sure that.
Yeah, and these, you know, I don't disagree, you know, when it comes to ordering some of these, but for example, the charging stations for vehicles, bicycles, and electronic devices, we have those budgeted now. That's something we are doing now, we're adding charging stations in our decks. Almost every year, we're adding more charging stations. Climate action, as part of the climate action and adaptation plan, has resources to expand charging. So we're looking at solar charging devices in the community. So that's why that's moved up forward, because resources in hand, ready to go. You know, something like the snow clearing of sidewalk corners, again, we've talked about that, that's just, it's a heavy lift financially. And you're talking about people and equipment. And they're expensive, and even on the equipment side, we're running into issues where we can't get equipment, you know, nine to 12 months out is doing really good on this stuff. So that's why it's back a little bit. But if you want to move it up, we'll do our best to get started as soon as possible.
Yeah, I'm not really, again, looking at this as we're, you know, actually implementing it in its full sense, but taking the kind of steps that you're just talking about, trying to understand, you know, what will be entailed in this, sort of at the planning phase, so to speak, before implementation, if that makes sense.
I had just a question about the fleet of electric buses. If I'm remembering right, when we first obtained them, we realized that there were some routes that these couldn't take. So would the ultimate goal not necessarily be to replace the entire fleet as the others wear out, but to keep some non-electric buses for those, like the Iowa Avenue Bridge, for instance?
Yeah, I think that's the only, that's the only obstacle that I'm aware of. So we'd have to keep, you know, a bus that can get under that, or, you know, reroute routes around that bridge, or raise the bridge, you know. But I think this is, this is an implementation plan that, you know, is probably going to be fifteen, ten, fifteen years. But by the time every bus comes up for replacement, we're holding on to buses now eighteen to twenty years, even though the, kind of the useful life, they say, is twelve, fifteen. So it's going to take some time. So maybe by then, you know, the buses will be built in a way that the electric buses might fit under that bridge, too.
That's a great plan. I know people love the buses.
I'm happy, again, happy to see in there the separated bike path issue. I literally just read an article yesterday about this being one of the best investments for switching, switching away from a carbon-heavy economy that you can make right now. They've had huge successes in a variety of cities, once they have separated paths. And I know that's a heavy lift as well, I'm just glad to see it in here.
Any other item? We will move on to economy, which is on page 14.
It seems like an incredibly good, sorry, it seems like a really good kind of overlay of a lot of different strategies that are coming from different places to be able to create a healthy sort of economic plan.
My only suggestion, and I don't feel particularly strongly about it one way or another, is I noticed that later on in the plan, when you're talking about streets and infrastructure, the possible need for lost, I think that it would be, I think it would be good to add that into this section as well, particularly maybe as part of the childcare thing. But we're going to need more funds for some of these things. And lost for early childhood education and so forth is likely going to be a quite a popular item, if we're able to push it. But again, whatever you all want, I just wanted to note that I saw it later and thought it might fit here well as well.
I mean, I noticed that under the great flexible incentives to support the top goals of Iowa City's SMID districts and other commercial nodes, including attaining a desired business mix that serves the surrounding neighborhood, I would just add to that, that, and I see that it's a fiscal year '25, so it's sort of, it's not happening anytime immediate to, you know, our plans, including in there the notion that it's a desired business mix. But what I, my observation is that creating public space as a part of a commercial district is a really valuable component of a successful commercial district. And, you know, we saw that, I think, dramatically with the North Side Marketplace recently, where closing Lynn Street suddenly was kind of a transformative move in terms of the value of that commercial district to the city and to the community. And opened up all kinds of programming and other opportunities for congregating. So I don't know if we need to change anything, but I would just simply, you know, as we move forward on those things, to have, how can we make them more sociable as part of the discussion?
I think that's a good point, Councilor Taylor, or Thomas. Great things, great news is coming out of SMID, and in particular, I'm thinking of the Smolikov's location. And I think that's intended to be very similar to what the atmosphere of the diversity markets were, which was a very social event. And it sounds to me that they're going to have the little cubby holes for the different vendors, food and crafts and whatever, in that location. And it'll be indoors, of course, but very social. And I'm anxious to see that happen.
I think it sounds like a fantastic idea. One of the things that I like is that, for what it's worth, this is where the SMIDS themselves can decide, I mean, because that's definitely, that was what the downtown district, along with those property owners and, you know, were able to say, this is what we want to council. And I know that there are similar plans for the South District in terms of being able to make placemaking. So I love that you pointed it out. I'm wondering necessarily if it needs to come from the city, since the SMIDS themselves are the ones who are kind of putting that money in, and then they can come and advocate to us.
Right. As I said, I'm not necessarily making, suggesting changes.
Right, but it's a great, it's a great point.
My observation is that.
It's a great point.
Neighborhood commercial districts often benefit from having public open spaces part of the land use plan.
Awesome. If nothing else, we'll move on to safety and well-being on page 16.
I do have a question about, actually, the first item, and in terms of champions. And I mean it utterly neutrally, is the police department the right owner or champion for this item, right?
Well, the council, I think, appointed Mayor Teague to represent you all at these meetings. I think it's probably, Mayor, you probably haven't been to a meeting yet, have you?
They haven't had one scheduled yet.
Probably waiting till after the first of the year, would be my guess, to reconvene. If you'd like to list the city council on there. But when it comes time for implementation of this, it's absolutely the police department that's going to be the point here for the city. And I think that's a lot of how these violence intervention programs work. The police department's in close communication with the team that's on the street, the civilian team that's on the street, sharing information and helping guide positive outcomes. team that's on the street, and sharing information and helping, helping guide positive outcomes. So we can add city council, you can replace police with city council if you want, but there's really not another city department that would take a lead here.
Well, and I think this is one, I had a similar question, Megan, and I think it's one where I anticipate that we will see non-city organizations really taking the lead in this. I think, I think there are challenges and problems with the police in terms of information sharing and some of those things you were just mentioning, Jeff, that, that can make it, in some cases, less effective when law enforcement is centered in some of those violence interruption strategies. So I, I think that, yeah, we had good discussion in having Mayor, you appointed to represent us, but I, and I think I said this at one of our sessions as well, I don't know about the, you know, the centrality of law enforcement in that effort overall. So I don't know if we want to make ourselves that or some other, you know, who's the best liaison for people who are on the ground, since Fun Patrol doesn't exist yet, because it'd be them.
And certainly, the police are active in this. I was just thinking about it as sort of that point person or point entity. Yeah. And I was thinking about it in terms of their own, albeit these have been brief conversations with Chief Liston, but, you know, that essentially he has acknowledged and said, yes, at the same time, we want to prevent crime, we're also here to.
Respond to.
Respond to it, thank you. So I was thinking in the same way that perhaps, you know, different organizations would come in. That said, these are all, what are the, what are the city departments that are holding? So I recognize sort of it's a, it's not rhetorical, but it's also like within the universe that we have, who is the best department? I guess I'm okay with this for now, but I do think that maybe this is something to have the somewhat flexible in thinking about, once the meetings have occurred, perhaps, you know, there's other ways in which we can envision this.
You can add city council now, you're in the meetings. This isn't something the police department is leading community-wide, but from our organization, they are leading. But if, with the mayor attending the future meetings, do you want to add city council as a second champion?
That would be good.
That'd be good. I'd be comfortable with that.
Anything else with this action plan?
I guess just kind of an overall comment, not just for this public safety section, but I think this brings up a good point of, Megan, you just said, like, of who, of the universe of who we have now, right, and like how departments are organized. So I hope that, you know, Jeff, as you're looking at how things, how different departments are changing and growing and how needs are changing, that some realignments in things may be, may be part of that flexibility that we talked about.
All right.
There were just a couple of typos I noticed under the heading, "Safety and Well-Being", or consistency. Do we, do we want to hyphen there? We have it in, in the actual description of the vision. It seems to me a hyphen is typically used there. And then under the last item of the actions, "Expand neighborhood-based programs such", I think we want to say "such as" mobile community, social recreation resources?
Good catch.
Yes, all right.
Right.
If I could just recap.
Yes.
Are you sure I'm clear? There's a lot of great discussion, I'm not sure I walked away with a lot of changes. So going back to neighborhoods and housing, there was some talk about splitting apart, an item brought up by Mayor Protem Alter, and I wasn't clear what the consensus was, and I don't think it really matters whether we split it apart or not, but just.
I think, I was asking for a point of clarity about like, sort of what was the rationale, and I got it, and I'm good.
And then the, the lost as a funding source under economy, are you suggesting that perhaps we consider adding that in the resources section, like evaluating lost as a funding source?
I don't know, does it need to be there? I mean, if it's already in the finance section? I have a question about the lost, and then we get to the finance section anyway.
Okay, I don't, I didn't see it in there, so I guess I, maybe that's me being confused.
I think that's just one financial source that we'll be looking to. So I'm not sure that it needs to be listed.
All right, and then just adding city council under the community violence intervention efforts, so, okay.
Yes.
All right, good.
And I also had a, like, editing comment on page seven, under climate action vision, you'll see it there, but there's a couple extra spaces between sentences, between, I don't remember what, one, two, three, four, five lines up, soil quality, period, and then there should be just, there's a couple extra spaces before every resident.
You know, I think that's because it's justified. It starts it out.
All of them are justified, some of them are, and some of them aren't.
Depends where the photo is, I think.
I think it's justified on the, good point. All right, we'll go check that, thanks.
So council, we're running a little short on time, so we're going to go to facilities, equipment, and technology, and that is on page 18. Okay. We'll go to people, and that is on page 20.
I did have one thought on the action plan under people, and the first one, it says, "Complete and execute the results of organization-wide compensation, et cetera, et cetera." I was wondering if that might be a place to put in there sort of, because it might fit there, just a nod towards, let me see, I think I wrote this down, so, a nod towards also kind of reviewing the classification, make sure that all city workers are classified appropriately, which will come into, I mean, which, which I think dovetails probably with ideas of, you know, what, where conditions and compensation are like.
Yeah, that's, that's part of the, the plan. We're preparing the RFP now, so I'm pretty familiar with where we're going. It's basically a review of all job descriptions, and then an internal equity analysis to make sure that any jobs that have evolved over the last decade or so that maybe haven't been captured in, in formal job descriptions are then evaluated against the peers within the community and are reclassified up or down accordingly. So it's been 15 years since the city's done this. It's just a healthy exercise for organizations our size to do, but that is absolutely part of it. We can make that clear here if you want, but it's certainly our intent.
I mean, that, I mean, I figured it might be, but I think adding it into something would be a small change, maybe.
I would support that change. I don't know what others.
Sure.
Yeah, we would add that. Anything else?
I have a suggestion, or, I don't know, a healthy challenge for council, under the fourth from the bottom, strengthen volunteer engagement, management, and appreciation efforts. I see this as a yes and, I mean, clearly, you know, city government is its own entity, and as such, you know, there's a lot of internal efforts towards this kind of work, but I think that council could be much more active in this. We've talked a lot about when we've actually gone to sort of, you know, like the, the various entities and been able to talk with staff and whatnot, how awesome and engaging and whatnot, and so it just seems like this might be a way that if we were, had it more as actually this is an action item for us, that we could have it more front of mind and, and help with that. So my, my suggestion is simply to, I put it forward to ask council how they feel about it, but then to suggest that we put a slash and put city council in there, too, just to be more aware and appreciative.
I really like that idea, even if it really just means an execution, like establishing the expectation of our participation in more of these things, because every, I completely agree, is like every time we do actually show up, it's very, I think, pretty meaningful or hopeful, but.
Write it down, then we're accountable.
Yeah, I like that.
I know we're pressed for time, I apologize, Mayor, but I can't help myself here. Thank you for that, first of all, that, that comment. One thing that a lot of cities do that we don't do is do public recognitions of our volunteers, particularly our boards and commissions, whether that's an annual kind of reception or event that brings all those folks together, and, and just as a way, a small way to say thank you for their service. It's something that the council could lead on. Again, that just focuses on boards and commissions, but I've seen that add a lot of value in communities before, but those are your appointments, it really takes your leadership to step in and say, yes, let's host this event, and, and say thank you in that way.
Great idea.
So the question is, do we want to add our name, or kind of go with what Councilor Burgess just mentioned, is just, you know, ensuring that the city manager's office is aware that we want to be, we're open to being included, even if it's just some of us being present?
I mean, I think adding our name there, even if that's what it means, would be good for future.
Yeah, especially if there would be something like, like an appreciation for all these.
Great, all right. Sound like we got a majority to add the name, perfect. Anything else on this, in this section? We'll go to financial, page 22.
I had some thoughts, actually, kind of going up to the strategy portion of the financial, and I'm just, and let me preface what I'm about to say by knowing that, and some of the comments earlier, that this is, could be one of, is going to be one of our biggest challenges over the next, you know, X number of years. And so my thought heading into this, and I find if I'm the only one, is that to be really clear that most things should be on the table, and that we don't want to presuppose what we'll have to do. So with that preamble, I was looking at the first strategy, and this, I know this is not, not, not something, you know, that's comfortable to talk about, but the way it's worded right now, it has that maintain stable or declining property tax rates as sort of like a presupposed outcome of what this process is going to be. I think that would be a wonderful outcome, don't get me wrong. I think that's fantastic as a possibility. And the rest of it, I have no problem with, the idea of growing tax, growing the tax base, diversifying revenue sources and leveraging outside funding, I think that all makes beautiful sense. I'm actually one of those people that has some, some real misgivings or some trepidation about lost as a funding revenue, because it is kind of a regressive tax, but I think even that, even though I don't like that, I think I acknowledge that that has to be something on the table that we talk about. So my thought, if anybody else agrees that that's just, without trying to box this, put, paint this into a corner, I guess, is what I'm, what I'm trying to avoid here, if we just kind of flip it around, and I just kind of just put something, so something like this, grow the tax base, consider alternative revenue sources, and leverage outside funding to maintain core services and priorities while maintaining equitable property tax rates. Just as, because I think, you know, just sort of then, we're not predetermining the outcome for ourselves in a couple of years, or for future council members, and, just my thought. Again, if I'm, if I'm the only one, that's fine, too, but I did want to kind of voice that.
Could you repeat it?
Sure. Grow the tax base, consider alternative revenue sources, and leverage outside funding to maintain core services and priorities, or maybe, maybe new priorities or whatever, other priorities, while maintaining equitable property tax rates. So if it works out that that's stable or declining, awesome, like, I'm not against that, I just don't want to presuppose, you know, just kind of, and again, this is obviously everything in this document, we can change as circumstances allow, as we need, so I don't know that it's a super critical issue, but the finance portion of this picture is going to be just, it's going to be less than fun over the coming years. So that's just my thought, again, if I'm the only one, that's fine, too, I just wanted to raise that idea.
I was thinking we just strike the words, or declining, but I like your version better, Sean. I have the same concern.
Although, this is part of the vision statement, right? These are the strategies.
Right, this isn't the action plan, it's sort of leading into the action plan.
Right, right, no, 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 I mean, I'm, I'm on the same page as you, looking, I was just sort of like working through the rhetorical of like, here's the vision, right, and so.
How we get to that.
Right, right. And so that's like I said.
It's the how.
I'm, I'm not a big fan of lost, but I acknowledge that, you know, it needs to be in the action plan, is something we discuss and have a healthy debate about, so.
Well, and lost also, totally different debate, but, or discussion, but it's like, it depends on what it's going for.
Right, different issue for a different day, you know, so.
Yeah, I would support the change. I do think we need to be somewhat open to circumstance.
Can you email me that?
Absolutely.
I'm fine with the changes, well, and we need to talk about lost, I'm not going to do it here.
Yeah, we'll definitely.
Karen, I'm sorry, I just said that's the how, the strategies are the what, right? I'm remembering the pyramid.
Yeah.
Oh, yes, yes.
All right, any action items from this section? No? All right. So other than that, any other comments about anything in the report, so that we can maybe kind of wrap it up? I will say the alignment crosswalk, I really appreciate it seeing kind of the how is, how is aligning with a lot of things within our community, Better Together, 2030 Vision, I know we've been talking about that a lot, the racial equity and social justice and human rights, and some of the other things, you know, the climate action, so those are some of the things that I thought was really good. And of course, a vision east central, east central Iowa, so, yeah, it was really good.
Yeah, I really appreciated that, as well as this whole environmental scan, basically putting everything into context in different ways, and that's something we haven't done before.
Under the consultant notes, and this is just something I want to put out to council for us to discuss at a different time, I very much like the idea of a decision-making framework, so that allows us, so that, to John's point, like, things that come up and say we might need to change, or what have you, we have something in place that helps us have kind of a strategic plan of how do we make decisions for adapting to change, and how do we prioritize as we need to, rather than just, you know, I woke up and I had a really good breakfast this morning, so I'm in this frame of mind, so. Anyway, I just, I very much like that idea, and I would like to put it for perhaps a future work session or something.
I think this would be.
To figure it out, how, what does that look like?
I think that'd be great, it's seven of us up here with seven different ideas.
With seven different breakfasts.
Yes. That would be helpful. Outside of the changes that have been mentioned now, what are council thoughts?
Come a long way.
This is amazing.
Good about it.
A lot of gratitude and a lot of worries. I have that feeling of like, when you have a really hard, like, that weekend where we just like, you have to clean up the yard before fall, and you work really hard, and you get done, you're tired or whatever, or, you know, you've done a lot of work, but you feel good about it, and I feel good about this plan.
I'm excited to hold us to it, with flexibility, but expect me to be looking down, down the dais and saying, I remember this.
If it's already been litigated, we're not going to do it again.
Try not to pull that one out again, sorry.
All right, thank you, Karen, and your team.
And thank you so much for trusting us to help you with this, and definitely a collaboration between Isakaga and your staff, who have been just fantastic to work with, so it's been a pleasure.
Yeah, so on behalf of the city and the, all of the citizens of this community, or individuals who are in our community, we say thank you.
Thank you, yes.
All right, we're going to move on to clarification of agenda items. In the late packet, you'll see we do have one resolution, no, not a resolution. Proclamation. I knew it was a word. Proclamation that we'll be doing, just wanted to point that out.
So I'm going to go ahead and, which, which one are you doing first? The first one was really short, or not agenda items, never mind, sorry.
Yeah, we're just doing agenda items, and then we'll get to information packets, but yes.
I think, I just want to point out, I don't need to do it in Maine, oh, wait a minute. Sorry, I just have to find it. Nope, never mind, I'm good, I'm going to wait.
Okay, awesome. So let's go to, if there's no more items there, we'll go to information packet.
I'm sorry, Mayor, I was late to jump in.
Yes.
This may be on, on your agenda for leading the meeting, but I did want to let the council know that we will have to defer the UI Labor Center agreement one more meeting. We've made some good progress, but just didn't have everything in place, so I, I know you've heard me say this before, but I feel very good that it'll be.
heard me say this before, but I feel very good that it'll be ready for November 15th. So we'll ask for a deferral on that to your next meeting.
Great. All right. We'll move on to information packet, October 20th.
Really small packet.
Did I make sure of the right one? No, never mind. I'll wait for the next one.
All right. We'll move on to October 27th, information packet. There's a few things there.
I would like to say thanks to Councilor Weiner. I really appreciate the work that went into the land acknowledgement draft resolution. I didn't see anything there that, that I had any arguments or problems with. So I just, just thank you for the, for the work that went into that.
Thank you. I also wanted to mention a few things with respect to it, but...
Go ahead.
So, just so for everybody's information, in drafting it, I drew directly from the University of Iowa's land acknowledgement, the, the College of Law's land acknowledgement, and the language from the Native American Council here at the university. In my view, it's really long past time for us to honor those on whose land we live and thrive. It's an essential part of our history. And I think we've learned over the past few years at least, that we must learn from, accept and acknowledge our past and allow it to inform our present and our future. The, this happens also to be the first day of Native American Heritage Month. And so it would seem like an auspicious time to consider moving something forward. And also, whatever the council decides to adopt, it's my personal view that we, it doesn't need to be read at the beginning of every meeting. It can be easily accessible on the city website, can be linked to the agenda if the council should, should so choose. I just thought it, we should get it on the agenda and move forward with the land acknowledgement. It's been recommended by a couple of our commissions. And we also just passed, had Indigenous Peoples' Day, which we passed as a council, or at least was done. So, anyway, that's my two cents worth.
I'd like to see this on the agenda for our approval. Second, four, I don't know.
Yeah.
I mean, we need, we need three people, right, under our current rules.
I did have a question, though. Do we want to have some sort of a, not this whole statement, but some sort of verbal, do we want to add that to the beginning of our meetings in some sort of a verbal way, or do we just want to have that attached? And I don't have, I don't have a strong, you know, I'm asking, not, not suggesting through, through a question, what way to, to, you know, to do something like this, like a shorter version, or?
I don't know what the best way is. Obviously, I think it would be at least the first time that we talk about it would be read, but I don't know what the council wants to do otherwise. I think it's important that it exists, that it exists.
And that may be something for us to ruminate upon.
Yeah. I, I think if we can get the land acknowledgement, if there's any changes, I think now would be a good time to talk about any of those changes in the language. And then how we rec, you know, how we, what we do with the document. I would agree with what Councilor Weiner just stated. That will be something that we have, I would, I would think on our website, as a land acknowledgement, we do annually and maybe we can do it several times throughout the year, like even this month, something like that, where we'll be able to also give, if not the full version, a more smaller, shorter version.
I think that makes sense.
Any thought to language that needs to be changed? Here none? Then we will have it on a future council meeting.
Probably okay to have that on the next one. Are you comfortable with that?
Yes.
I appreciate it seeing the opposing public one measure, some literature on that. The county did something as well as the, the school board had something in the paper. And so happy that the council has been given this some thought as well. If nothing else, we will move on to the University of Iowa Student Government with Welcome.
Hi, council. Just a couple announcements here. First off, as you know, we had homecoming last week. It was really successful. We had events scattered throughout the week, an amazing parade, and to top it off with a Hawkeye victory during the football game. And then we have a Board of Regents meeting on November 10th. We have some of our executives going to council bluffs to help communicate student ideas and connect with the Board of Regents. And then we also have a new deputy, Noah LeFever, and let, I'll have him introduce himself.
Yeah, thank you. So, yeah, my name is Noah LeFever. I'm currently a second-year student now, and I'm going for a BA in political science and then also a social studies education. And I look forward to working with you all. So, thank you.
Great, you're welcome.
Welcome.
Also, last thing, keep an eye out for an email from Noah to hopefully set up a meeting within the near future. Thanks.
Awesome.
Keaton, just as an FYI, we'll have to formally do it on, we can do it at the November 15th, but I'll email you about it. I need like a letter or something.
Yep.
Perfect.
All right. Council updates on assigned boards, commissions, and committees.
I actually had a really interesting meeting with University of Iowa Oberlin Center for Advanced Learning in conjunction with Tippi School of Business. And it was a round table to connect business leaders, nonprofit leaders, government, and the University of Iowa, kind of clustering around grad students. There's been a real push within academia to provide graduate students with alternate kind of career thinking, since the education system currently and in higher education, there's a real dearth of jobs. And so how do graduate students take the skills, the expert skills that they have and sort of think about them more broadly in other contexts? And as we all know, one major way that that happens is through communication and networking. And so this was an initial discussion among all these entities and university professors to think about what are the important skills that grad students have already, expert skills that they're not even thinking about, and for professors to start thinking about those skills in a more broad context, in conversation with sort of different people in the community. So this is the beginning of a conversation that's really looking to create a sustainable network among the different entities of government, nonprofit, business, and universities. So I think that it's yet another way that the university and sort of the town part of the town and gown are really trying to make some inroads in an organic way. So it was a really interesting conversation.
So several of us attended the ICAT annual meeting, and that was sort of follow-on to a special joint meeting that was held between, with ICAT and the Business Partnership to discuss the possibility of a merger of the two. That will be more discussions going on with, with both organizations, but to create some efficiencies and, and be able to move some processes forward in a way that apparently mirrors what a lot of other towns, cities are doing around the country.
I did have a question about pending work session items. I'm sorry. I'm a little out of order. Is that okay, Mayor?
No, go right ahead.
Are we going to have, or when can we have a discussion about after November 8th? You know, what, what meeting at which will we be able to discuss the presumed vacancy we'll have on our council?
I'm so happy you brought that up.
Yeah.
That's the plan.
So if, if a resignation is received on November 9th, staff, you will have a memo in your November 10th packet laying out your options to move forward. We may, we may actually have an item on your agenda just in case you're able to, to make a decision on which path you want to go forward. So we're working with the county to lay out those options, and that will come from Kelly, Eric, and I.
Okay. For the 15th, it sounds like?
For the 15th, yes.
Thank you.
So your November 10th information packet will have some background, and then I think we still need to figure out if, if there needs to be a agenda item as well.
Right. Any other item? I did want to say thank you to Mayor Pro-Tim for leading us, or leading the council in the last work session and formal meeting. I did watch it. Just last night, just last night. I needed to make sure that I wasn't going to be surprised by anything today. But no, you did an excellent job. And so thank you so much for doing your role and filling in when needed. So thank you so much.
Congratulations to you, Mayor.
I appreciate everybody's support and staff, especially for some of those moments when some logistics might have fallen through the cracks. So thank you, everybody. I appreciate it.
All right. With that, we will be adjourned until 6:00 PM. With that, we will be adjourned until 6:00 PM. It is now 6:00 PM, and I'm going to call the City of Iowa City Meeting to Order on November 1st, 2022. Roll call, please.
Alter.
Here.
Burgess.
Here.
Harmsen.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Teague.
Here.
Thomas.
Here.
Weiner.
Here.
All right, and welcome to everyone that is here in City Hall, and also those that are virtual as well. We're going to move on to 1A, which is Proclamations. Change Your Clock, Change Your Battery Day. Whereas City of Iowa City is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living and in visiting our city, and whereas fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire, and whereas between the hours of 11:00 PM to 7:00 AM are the peak alarm hour times for fire deaths, when people tend to be asleep, and whereas almost two-thirds of home fires in the United States resulted from fires in homes with inoperable smoke alarms or no smoke alarms, and whereas the designation of a special day to remind residents of Iowa City to change the batteries in their smoke alarms, timed to coincide with the fall ritual of changing clocks, would greatly diminish the chance of this tragedy occurring in Iowa City. And whereas smoke alarms should replace, be replaced every 10 years, and whereas November 6, 2022 is the day of the community members of Iowa City change their clock from daylight savings time to standard time. Now therefore, I Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, do hereby proclaim November 6, 2022 to be Change Your Clock, Change Your Battery Day in Iowa City, and urge all residents to change their smoke alarm batteries, install new smoke alarms where needed, and to replace smoke alarms if they are 10 years old or older. And to receive this proclamation is Fire Captain Troy Roth.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, for recognizing this most important day where we perform the fall ritual of changing the batteries in our clocks when we change the time. Last year, every year in the United States, there are around 3,000 home fire deaths, and as you mentioned, two-thirds of these homes have smoke alarms that are either not working or missing. That works out to 2,000 needless fire deaths. The working smoke alarm is one of the single most important fire safety devices we have in our homes. It is important that we keep the batteries up to date, and we test them every month. It is estimated that households with inoperative smoke alarms now outnumber those homes with no smoke alarms, and smoke alarms most often fail because of dead or missing batteries. So it's vital that we test them every month. Many new smoke alarms are 10-year sealed units, so you don't have to change the batteries in those, but just remember to test the unit. As you take your smoke alarm off this year to change the batteries, there's a date on the back of each one, 10 years. Doesn't mean they won't work past 10 years, but it's recommended to change them every 10 years. Thank you for this.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to items 2 through 6. Can I get a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved. Weiner.
Second, Burgess.
Anyone from the public like to discuss this topic? If you are present, please step to the podium. If you're online, please raise your hand, and I'll acknowledge you. See no one. Council discussion.
Just wanted to mention item 5C, the Sturgis Ferry Park Improvements and Southside Recycling Center. And I kind of say park tongue-in-cheek, because I've never really thought of it as a park. I've seen a lot of boaters using it, going on and off the boat ramp, so I was just really pleased to see this, because adding the new amenities that will enhance the park use, such as a pavilion and paved parking lot. I mean, this has been much needed for a long time and be a major improvement. So I'm sure everybody will appreciate these improvements. Thank you for that.
I also wanted to mention 5B. It's long past, it's been long past time that we reclassify the airport manager's pay grade. I think he's been undervalued, or at least underpaid for some years, so happy to see that.
Yes, I agree.
All right. Roll call, please.
Burgess.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Motion passed at 7 to 0. Item number 6 is Community Comment. This is an opportunity for individuals within our community to come before council to speak on any item that is not on our agenda. You'll have up to three minutes. If you wish to address a topic that's not on the agenda, please sign in or bring a sign-in tab from the back podium. If you're online, which I see no one at this time, but if someone does come online, you can raise your hand. Welcome.
Hey, how you guys doing? My name is Brandon Ross. I live in Iowa City, and the clock's not running, so I'm going to go for a half hour. You know, all right, see, I blew the whistle on myself. Anyway, happy autumn and everything. I do want to speak just briefly about that the, that there's a terrible crisis going on in Eastern Europe right now. My family background is from Ukraine, from Kiev, actually. And right now, it's eight months. The US and NATO are in there, and Russia's on the other side. It's east versus west. It's a civil war that has been going on for eight and a half years, and the US and NATO chose the eastern side of Ukraine, and Russia chose the western side of Ukraine and entered the country. Whether you believe this is because of US and NATO aggression and imperialism, or it's because of Russian war crime for entering the country or it's because of Russian war crime for entering the country or both, the important thing right now I would like to say is that we, is that we write to our congressmen, our senators and people in the House and the White House, and we please plead with them to open, be open for negotiations. Those of you who followed probably have heard the State Department say that negotiations are off the table. However, the United States is not really at war with anybody in the area. So for the U S to be able to say that negotiations are off the table is a perverse position. Why should I bring this up in an Iowa City Council? Well, you know, they say act local, think global, and I do believe that this is a local issue. I do believe it has something to do with Iowa City. I believe that this affects everybody. It affects our economy. It affects, well, our ability to continue on this planet. Right now there are two nuclear powers that are going at it. It's the, the United States and Russia. Ukraine is just a playing field for the two. Right now, U S has no soldiers in Ukraine, but Ukrainians are there. U S is not being bombed, but Ukrainians are being bombed. There are Russian people in Ukraine. The Russians actually came in on one side to shield the Donbass area, which is Russian. And that was their least intent. What it became later had a lot to do with us. So please, there are writing campaigns going on across the country. Please plead with the White House and representatives and senators to, to ask for negotiations to be part of our foreign policy. And it's a disgrace that the U S could say something like negotiations are off the table. And a letter was withdrawn from Congress that was authored by Ro Khanna and fifty others that asked for negotiations to be put, put on the agenda, and that was retracted. And that's a complete disgrace. And please, take fifteen minutes and, and work this through, write to your Congress.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for the city council and everybody here.
Thank you. Welcome. Please state your name and the city you're from, and there's also a sign in there.
Hi, my name's Felicia Peeper, and I live in Iowa City. I'm here advocating on behalf of an unhoused mother of four children who cannot hear because she has a lot going on. She has been in contact with Shelterhouse since two thousand and twenty-one before her eviction. She moved through the eviction process by herself, worked out a deal with her landlord on her own to make sure that she didn't have an eviction on her record. Shelterhouse is supposed to be following her through, her through that process. They were not. She did it by herself. She's been unhoused completely for at least three months now and has continued to get her calls ignored, her texts ignored, and appointments canceled from Shelterhouse. She cares for four children in our school district. And I, this is not the first time that I've come to city council meetings talking about Shelterhouse. I'm also concerned about the cold weather and the fact that I have not heard anything about a winter shelter. I am, you know, lucky to call some of our unhoused neighbors friends who've dealt with the lack of winter shelter and those conditions. I think it's appalling that the City of Iowa City does not take accountability for unhoused neighbors and farms that off to a nonprofit who is clearly not accountable to the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address a topic that's not on our agenda? Welcome, please state your name and city you're from.
Hi, I'm Hannah Zodde. I'm from Iowa City. I also want to talk about housing in the community. So obviously Shelterhouse is an extremely important institution in this community, but it's still a private institution. And that means it's not held accountable to the public and to our community. I don't know how we can continue to say that housing is a, a human right while also relegating it to a private nonprofit. There's nothing that's more important than housing. You know, what could be more important than keeping our community members out of the cold in Iowa winters? I'm also really concerned that we have not heard anything about a winter shelter yet. And, you know, we hear a lot about rents rising in the city and increasingly inaccessible housing market. And more and more, and more and more of members of our community are unhoused or housing insecure. And yet we continue to prioritize real estate companies and landlords instead of prioritizing keeping our member, members of our community and our neighbors out of the cold during Iowa winters and giving people access to housing, something that is extremely basic. This is part of a larger problem. Public housing needs to be a priority of the council and of the city where we can democratically and collectively build a community that does not prioritize these landlords and real estate companies and instead actually prioritizes housing. I agree that we should not be relegating this to a private nonprofit. This needs to be a, a public institution that we can deal with democratically. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Tara McGovern. I live in Coralville. I'm also here advocating on behalf of our friend that was mentioned first by Felicia. And I'm just here to share some details because she's not here to tell her story today, and she asked that we pass this along. You could also go and look at the Board of Supervisors meeting from the last time because our friend showed up at that meeting and was able to tell her story. As far as I know, we're still not getting the support that is needed. So in February of two thousand and twenty-one, the Grant Elementary S F, S F A connected our friend with staff at Shelterhouse. And she wasn't able at that time to get support from Shelterhouse because she had some subsidized housing. So we're, we're all the way back in February, two thousand and twenty-one. And in April of two thousand and twenty-two, she contacted Shelterhouse before leaving her, her previous residence. June of that year, one of her daughters sadly died. August of that year, and, and she was contacting throughout, from June and two, through August, she was working to try to get housing for her family. In August of that year, she was, she had to go to eviction court. The Shelterhouse staff was supposed to be present at the court hearing, but they were not present in the courtroom. August fifteenth of two thousand and twenty-two, Shelterhouse staff told her that the shelter was full and that she was going to be put on the priority list, August fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, still unhoused. Also that month, she and her four school-aged children, school, children in this district, our, our, our school district were, had, had to move to a, a hotel room that has been paid through Communities Financial Assistance Program and also through crowdfunding. Still not a stable housing situation. No transportation being provided for her children to get to and from school, other than some of the gas money that has been provided occasionally. But then you need to have a car in order to use that. So let's see, September of two thousand and twenty-two, the hotel where she had been staying has tried on multiple occasions to kick the family out to make room for football games and the football fans, even though there are some arrangements between hotels to try to have discounted rates for fam, for people that are experiencing homelessness. So all that to say, as, just to follow up on both of what Felicia and also Hannah said, we have a problem here. We have a problem with accountability and people are falling through the cracks. We had a, a person who came and spoke before you at the last city council meeting. I'd love to know how you followed up to help her as well, because we are feeling like we're being passed from one agency to another agency and justification is being made for nobody doing anything to help. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address a topic that is not on ours council agenda? Seeing no one. We're going to move on to item number seven, which is planning and zoning matters. Somehow I don't see them. Okay, all right, now I do see. All right, we're going to welcome Noah. Welcome, Noah. One second, please. Welcome, Noah.
Hello, you can hear me?
Yes.
Okay, okay, perfect. I wanted to re-raise the housing issue again, the two seekers spoke, well, excuse me, three seekers spoke. So, but more recently, I just went, uh, this is an issue that we've had years now, you, the city not doing anything about winter shelter, which I haven't heard anything about there being winter shelter open, open. And I've asked every single one of you sitting up there on that dais and only you, Bruce and Janice are the ones to respond to me, which is really sad that you have so little care for the houseless community that you can't even bother to like, do anything about it. Like you, you know, this is a problem and yet you sit in your ass and you, so what, so my question is, when are you going to put this on agenda item of like, of how to have a shelter for people that actually works in the winter? Hello?
We're here and we can hear you.
Hello?
Are you done? We can hear you.
I just don't know what's wrong.
Are you done with your comments? All right, thank you. Anyone else have any comments that is not on our agenda item?
I don't know if you can hear me or not.
Anyone else seeing no one? We're going to move on to item number seven, which is planning and zoning matters. Seven A is rezoning nine thirty-seven East Davenport Street. Ordinance rezoning property located at nine thirty-seven East Davenport Street from medium density, single-family residential to medium density, single-family residential with a historic district overlay. And I'm going to open up the public hearing. And we'll start with comments from our staff, Danielle, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council Danielle Sitzman, Neighborhood Development Services. As you introduced, this is a voluntary rezoning request to a historic landmark district for nine thirty-seven East Davenport Street. The owner is here tonight and will probably speak to you as well. The purpose of the landmark historic designation is overall to ensure the preservation of historic resources and require historic review for exterior modifications after the designation. The difference between a landmark, historic landmark and a historic district is that a historic district is for a cohesive area with several properties included, all contributing significantly to the integrity of the district. A landmark is basically a standalone property. They do use the same historic criteria, though, to be evaluated as to whether they should be designated or not. So we'll talk about that a little bit as we go through this application. The property is currently zoned RS eight. It will retain that zoning. The landmark designation is an overlay zoning, so it simply goes on top of that. And so all of the existing use regulations still remain. Once the landmark designation is applied, however, it does trigger historic reviews of exterior changes to the building, as I mentioned. This also makes the property eligible for some special exceptions and additional flexibility in our zoning code and for tax credits from the state. So in regards to this property, it is one of the few intact examples of early Goostown college cottages that show the area's semi agrarian history. This area consists of many long narrow lots with houses located near the street, allowing, as they did in the day, for gardens, orchards, and animal grazing even. A large portion of the Goostown area was home to working-class immigrant populations in Iowa City from Bohemia and Germany. So this house was owned and built by a Bohemian immigrant who worked as a stonemason and was later occupied by multiple generations of one family and even became starter home and rental property common to the neighborhood. The property was constructed around eighteen seventy-four, and the slide shows the various additions that have occurred over time that have been documented, documented through our historic research into the property and then the designation tonight. Constructed, I said, in around eighteen seventy-four, it's a simple, single-story structure. As you look at the pictures, you think it's not one of those monumental architectural types, but it's definitely part of the history of this neighborhood. This photo identifies some of those additions I mentioned early visually where they occurred on the building. Before eighteen eighty-two, there's an addition for the basic, basically the structure growing as the family that occupied it grew, grew as well. And then there's been very few changes since the nineteen twenties. And so it remains kind of a great example of the early history of the neighborhood. This shows one of those porch additions. Obviously with a large family in a small house, if anybody's lived that way, you realize you spend a lot of time outside. So the porch addition was an important component to that as well. So talking about landmark rezonings, this is a zoning action, so there's involvement by the Planning and Zoning Commission to evaluate the criteria that we look at for rezonings, which are essentially compliance to the comprehensive plan and any public improvement plans for the area. And the role of the Historic Preservation Commission, which also recommend, makes recommendations, is to evaluate the historic significance of the property. So in regards to compliance with the comprehensive plan, the proposed rezoning is compliance, compliant with the comprehensive plan, which has multiple goals for preservation of historic resources as well as the culture and history of Iowa City. As then and also looking, there are no major proposed, proposed public improvement plans in the area that this designation would conflict with. Regarding the historic significance that's evaluated by the Historic Preservation Commission, the criteria that are used are a series of criteria. The first two are prerequisites that both must be met, and in this case they are. And then one of the remaining criteria must also be found, and in this case, two additional ones have been found. So for the first two prerequisites, that it is a recognizable architectural type and does, is a significant aspect of the community history, so A. Also, the property is located in its original location, retains most of its historic materials that defines its historic character and is surrounded by residential properties that are indicative of the original setting of, of the structure and the way the agrarian immigrant populations established in this neighborhood. Again, going towards C, associated with events that have a significant contribution to broad patterns of our history, going to the, speaking to the immigrant population and housing types of the day and the living habits of those occupants. When HPC reviewed this, I'm not sure if criteria F had been fully commented on, but we have heard back from the Office of the State Archaeologists that because of the relatively undisturbed nature of this lot, that there may very well be historic archaeological resources that could be found in, in the future if they were to be explored on this lot, just because much of the lot's undisturbed. So things fell where they fell and they might still be discoverable in the future. Next steps, this really is a pretty simple development process, just the initiation of the rezoning. And as I said, this did receive recommendation from both HPC and Planning and Zoning Commission, both recommending unanimously designation as a landmark. That concludes my staff report. I'm happy to answer questions. And as I mentioned, the property owner is here today.
Great. Any questions? Thank you. All right. Is there a development team that have any? Did the property owner want to, want to give comments?
I'm, I'm just here if you would like to ask questions, but I thought that maybe, pardon me, a couple of things could be, I should have added in that little summary.
And just for clarification, I just want to make sure that everyone know that I'm opening up public comment. And you'll have three minutes to give your comments.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
So I just wanted to add that this little cottage is between the seven and nine hundred block of Davenport Street, which is parallel to Bloomington, which is the beginning of Goostown. And there are only a handful of these small cottages left, and they're disappearing fast. Two went down this summer. One is being disassembled now. And two more, I've been told, are coming down within this coming year and others. We have gotten three letters that I remember just since we started this project from developers that wanted to buy the property to take down the house. So I also looked at the records to see if there are any other immigrant houses that would be in this district that would be similar, that have been preserved. There are two houses on the National Register in Goostown or the edges of Goostown. One is Rose Hill, which is connected to the Irish family. And the other is up on North Reno Street and didn't have anything to do with the immigrant population. So there are no houses that have been set aside to honor this early history and culture of our city. been set aside to honor this early history and culture of our city. Uh, so this is a tiny cottage. And also, it, you know, to me personally, when we're talking about the homeless and people needing a place to stay, this is an example of a tiny house that is, uh, possible for a young family, a, a young couple to start out in. It would keep it out of landfill. It adds to the, uh, historic value of the neighborhood and our history. And so to me, it's, um, an easy, uh, solution to some several problems. So I hope you'll consider that. And I'm here if you would like to ask any questions.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else from the public like to make comments? CNN one, council discussion.
Well.
Actually, so I, I have to close the public hearing. So I want to make sure that the council, are you all inclined to vote with P and Z? All right. So I'm going to close the public hearing. Now, council discussion.
We need a motion. Yeah.
Can I get a motion to give first consideration?
So moved. Alter.
Second. Wiener.
All right. Now, council discussion. It even happens to me.
Well, I think this kind of is an interesting item to have after our work session discussion. Sort of speaks to what I was talking about in the core neighborhood. They have a long history of, um, being a, you know, a human settlement and have gone through, um, you know, the, the neighborhoods in which these early settlements, uh, exist have gone through considerable change. And, you know, I'm, I'm personally very sympathetic toward the idea of preserving what I might call everyday architecture. These are not monuments to, you know, architectural style. They're, 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 uh, memorializing a certain aspect and period of Iowa City's history. Uh, and as Mary Beth mentioned, actually serve, um, conserve a practical use as a, as a small home. And, um, she also mentioned the, what's happening in the neighborhood. You know, all the, the other examples of these properties which are, um, being demolished. I, I would be interested to know, I mean, um, and we didn't, I didn't ask staff this question, but I would assume that, you know, a development opportunity on a site like this might be to preserve the cottage and develop a second accessory unit perhaps. Um, maybe too late to have that question answered, but, you know, that's the kind of thing that could happen, um, uh, with properties where we try to preserve certain aspects while acknowledging the opportunity for, uh, change within that context. So, um, I'm, you know, very supportive of this. As I said, again, it sort of speaks to the pressures that we're seeing, uh, in the core neighborhoods, uh, as we speak.
I'm just, I'm grateful for the effort to preserve this because I think piece, these different pieces, whether, um, as Counselor, Counselor Thomas mentioned, whether, uh, doesn't have to be monumental. Not all of our history is monumental, but it's important to preserve these different pieces so that we have, um, a roadmap going forward.
I appreciated the homeowner coming forth and showing support for this because sometimes that's not the situation that we deal with. So that's very encouraging and I will be supporting this. Roll call, please.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. Item number seven B is a preliminary and final plat, McGrath subdivision. Resolution approving the preliminary and final plat of the McGrath subdivision, Iowa City, Iowa. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved. Burgess.
Second. Taylor.
Moved by Burgess, seconded by Taylor, and welcome back Danielle.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an application, uh, by the property owner, Warrior Enterprises LLC, requesting a combined preliminary and final plat of McGrath subdivision. This is land that's been developed without being subdivided previously, basically to create a one point nine four acre commercial subdivision with two commercial lots, as I mentioned, already developed as fifteen oh one and fifteen fifteen Willow Creek Drive. Um, both, uh, properties already contain buildings and parking areas and no further development is being proposed at this time. Um, this shows the preliminary and final plat. This is a combined process that's allowed under our code. Basically, if you satisfy all the requirements for both the applications at once, you can combine them and take care of all of that in, uh, one case. Um, so the, uh, combination of those steps is the preliminary plat, which is essentially a public hearing process on the final plat, which is just more administrative. Um, so this plat does show the existing buildings and infrastructure. Um, no, as I said, no pub- additional development and no public improvements are required. So lot one contains a building that was constructed in the nineteen eighties and lot two contains a building constructed more recently in twenty seventeen. Uh, for review of the preliminary, preliminary plat, we did look at, uh, all of those criteria and requirements. Um, and there are no known zoning conditions, so we didn't really need to check back on, on that. Um, our review would be, uh, consistency with the comprehensive plan essentially. And this is in, uh, uh, the proposed development, which is existing development, is generally consisted with the, consistent with the comprehensive plan, which is a focus on general commercial development. Um, there is a Southwest District Plan also, um, identifying this area as appropriate for the type of development that's already there. Uh, we did take a look at the subdivision standards and determined that the preliminary and finally, final plat does satisfy the necessary subdivision design standards. Um, there are some things that could be improved and so we've included, um, installation of a eight-foot wide sidewalk as part of the, uh, requirements for at the time of redevelopment, um, basically to fulfill the bike master plan, um, looking to connect a trail that's very near this, uh, to the trail on Highway six. Um, as I mentioned, no additional improvements for stormwater or sanitary sewer. Um, we did evaluate the existing development and look at its setbacks and dimensional standards, um, and determined that any future development would need to, uh, comply with some additional standards, but at this time, um, no, uh, improvements on behalf of, um, the plating would be required. We did take a look at sensitive areas, this is butts Willow Creek, and that is a regulated blue line stream and would have a required buffer. Um, the buffers being met under the current development. Unfortunately, most, much of that buffer is already, uh, already developed. Um, our sensitive areas ordinance, um, only occurred and began regulating properties in the mid nineties. So because this is existing development, uh, what we're looking to do is improve it as the time goes by. So any new development, um, would be subject to the sensitive area standard and hopefully, uh, eventual, um, renaturalization of the Willow Creek, uh, corridor would be the ideal. Um, at this point, however, well, all we can really ensure is that we're, um, getting a conservation easement in place so that we're prepared for that, should that be an opportunity in the future. Um, this is a, as I said, the prelim and final plat. Um, sensitive areas are, um, minimal and would be reviewed administratively with future site plan and any building permits should they occur would be, again, a staff review. Um, so based on a review of relevant criteria and subdivision codes, staff did recommend with no, uh, conditions. The P and Z concurred with that and also voted six to zero to recommend it this evening. That concludes my staff report. Happy to answer questions.
Just a quick question, Danielle. The, um, conservation easement is being added. I see that on, on the plat.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Anyone from the development team? No. All right. Public discussion is open. Anyone from the public have anything to say on this topic? CNN one, council discussion. Roll call, please.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. Item number eight is landfill cell fiscal year twenty twenty-three construction. Resolution approving project manual and estimate of cost for the construction of the landfill cell fiscal year twenty-three construction project. Establishing, establishing amount of bid security to accompany each bid, directing city clerk to post notice to bidders and fixing time and place for receipt of bids. I'm going to open the public hearing and welcome. Yes.
Walter from Engineering to give a, a brief presentation on this project. So it's located at our landfill on the west side of town, out off of Hebel Avenue. The, uh, cell is located in the northwest side of the site, just southwest of the buildings in the main campus. You can see that in the, in the red area. Um, so this cell is approximately eleven acres, depending on compaction rates, the amount of tonnage that we take in each year. Uh, this cell is estimated to last between nine and eleven years. Uh, we will be needing to have this space, uh, starting in twenty twenty-four. So construction of this next year allows us to transition from the current cell, uh, FY eighteen into this new cell, FY twenty-three. The landfill cell involves, um, regulatory requirements, one, uh, one of which is, uh, the, the liner system ties into the adjacent cells, which are, uh, FY oh two, FY oh six, and FY eighteen. We also have a series of piping and a liner system. So we have an underdrain system followed by a composite liner system. On top of that, we have a leachate collection system. We also are adding and expanding every time we touch new areas, we're expanding our gas extraction. So those gas extraction improvements will include an extension of the collection lines, uh, that we just, we just added this year. Uh, and we'll be building off of that new horizontal and vertical gas collection wells, which again helps us comply with our permits and, uh, and also will help us ensure that the landfill is operated in a safe way. Uh, we're also improving some stormwater. We're taking the opportunity because we're so close to the campus buildings, there's some stormwater drainage that currently goes through where we're building the new cell. So we're going to be rerouting some stormwater and improving our stormwater drainage. We're also taking the opportunity to repair some pavement and add some paved area, uh, on the campus area, which will allow us to expand some of our programming and to add some more space for the operators to be able to spread out a little bit more and to be able to serve our customers at the landfill better. The last thing we're doing with this project is realigning our sanitary sewer service, which goes underneath the, the landfill cell that we're going to be building. So we're going to reroute that to get it in a little bit more favorable location for future. So as the cell is built, uh, so next year, we, we have, basically have a full year to get ready to use that. So we don't anticipate that we'll really be into this cell and using it, uh, in our normal operations until, uh, well into twenty twenty-four. Uh, so, uh, we budgeted three point six million dollars for the construction. The construction estimate came in at three point seven million dollars. Pretty good considering the fact that that estimate was probably done two years ago before a lot of things, uh, changed with pandemic. We are taking bids at the end of this month and planning to award at the council meeting in December. We would anticipate starting in April with conclusion of construction in October. Uh, like to thank SCS engineers out of Clive. They did, uh, the work on the design on this and did an excellent job working with our staff to, uh, fit this very interesting shaped, uh, landfill cell in, into our current operations. So, um, any questions?
Joe, I do have a question. Um, what type of solid waste goes into this cell? Is this just refuse or does it handle organics? Like, how do we kind of separate that out?
So the, the initial four to six foot that we'll put in will mostly be out of packer trucks. Um, and the reason being is, uh, we don't want anything to puncture the liner. So we consider that fluffy garbage. That's the term. I don't know why we'd say that, but at any rate, we don't want harder things that could puncture that liner. After that point, we would be putting basically anything that we receive. So we have construction demolition debris. We have, um, petroleum soils that we accept. We have, uh, our regular garbage, uh, which would include organics in it. Um, if organics have been diverted into people's yard waste and those things, those are going into our composting operation. So they wouldn't be going into the, into the, the cell. Um, in the derate show, uh, and post derate show, we, we had, um, we did, we did have to figure out what to do with some of the wood waste. So every once in a while, we end up with some wood waste or some wood chips that we can't really sell or use in another way. So we try to get creative with how we do that. And we usually use that to stabilize our haul roads and our rain day pads. But anything that goes in, in doesn't come back out. So, um, so it is a variety of wastes that we have. Um, but the, the construction, I, the important thing is the construction demolition debris won't get added until we're well into setting up and phasing that, that new cell.
Thank you.
Yeah.
How long is the, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I was just going to ask, what are, what are, there's sort of a range of how long this cell would last. What are things the community can do to extend the life of this new cell?
Well, one of the best things that we did was back in twenty eighteen, we introduced the cardboard ban and that significantly decreased the amount of tonnage that we were receiving each year. And so after twenty eighteen, we were, we were kind of in that a hundred and thirty-five thousand tons a year. We dropped under a hundred and thirty-thousand tons for two consecutive years in a row. Um, we had a, a spike year, um, in the middle of the pandemic. A big part of that, I, we believe is, is pandemic waste. Um, and, uh, you know, a lot of people did a lot of construction and we had a lot of activity. Plus, we had the derate show in the middle of that. So we saw that as a year that was abnormal. This past year, which ended, uh, it, it, it follows our, the, uh, tonnage follows our fiscal year. This, everybody in the state does that from July first to June thirtieth, and it jumped back down to that mid hundred and thirty thousand range again for this past year. So, um, to directly answer your question, I guess, in a sense, it, it would, we're already doing a lot of things to do that. We have a car, we have an asphalt shingle recycling program that we reinstated. We have the cardboard ban. We've looked at different ways to divert some of our waste, um, you know, as with the, the methane feasibility study that we did, uh, a couple of years ago. And so, um, we see a good trend already happening. So I, I, I don't know that we need to do a lot to, to do that. And, um, you know, more what we're working on as a staff is getting better compaction rates. So making sure that we're, we're going over the wa- the waste in, in a responsible way and making sure that we're, we're building the waste in the cell in, in a more logical way. Those, those end up, we get better compaction rates and that gets more, more waste in, in the, you have a fixed volume. So depending on how much you put in and how well you compact it is really how much you can use for that.
Answered my question.
Perfect.
I actually have a question. Um, your minute goes back to super basic. Um, are the cell names aligned with the year that they're constructed?
They're very creative in that way. Yeah. We just, we, we don't, we don't want to confuse anybody, but yeah.
So if that's the case, was the FY eighteen cell substantially less in its acreage? Or it just, you've, you've figured out, uh, due to what you just explained about the compaction rates and the type of waste over the past five years, it just, you're at life end of this particular cell, you're, or village, right?
Right.
I guess I'm just wondering because you're saying that it's like nine to eleven years for this next cell? And I'm like, this was only five years, right? So I'm just, I'm a little concerned.
Yeah. So FY oh nine is an interesting cell. First of all, it was a seven, it was less than seven acres. This is eleven.
Okay.
This is over eleven. So significantly bigger. Um, FY eighteen is interesting because it's a piece of, at the original FY oh nine cell. So after the fire in two thousand twelve, we reconstructed FY oh nine into a smaller footprint.
Okay.
The remainder of that footprint that would have been the original FY oh nine ended up being a future cell, FY eighteen. So, um, it doesn't always, you know, FY ninety-eight, ninety-five, ninety-eight. So it doesn't always, you know, FY98, 95, 98, 02, 06, 09.
It's not necessarily chronological in terms of when it ends.
No. And each of them is a little different size and the ability of what we can maneuver our equipment in there kind of matters. Plus, every cell's building into its adjacent cells as well. So we're building into three other cells with the current cell that we're going to be constructing. Whereas 18 was only building into two different cells, the 09 cell and then the 02 cell. And so it was a much smaller footprint. It was very rectangular. This has a little bit more of a square shape to it, which will be a little easier for the operators to maximize the amount of waste that we can get in that area.
Thanks.
In, in the long term, what, what is the estimated buildout of the landfill? Do we have one?
Yes. Yes, we do. So it's likely, we're working on a facility plan right now, a planning document, which is gonna inform a lot of those decisions. But it's likely that we're going to be moving into what we call the northeast expansion after this FY23 cell, which is across our haul road and, and in, again, we're very creative. It's in the northeast corner of the site. So northeast expansion, we're, we're very, very creative. But we, then after that, we have a cell that can build immediately north of this FY23 cell. The problem with that area and why we wouldn't go there immediately is we want to borrow all the, the soil material out of there and use that material in our operations for daily cover and for a final cover construction and those kinds of things. So rather than paying a contractor to do that, our own landfill operator staffs will be borrowing that material. And so that, that takes a little while to get to that. So whereas the northeast expansion area is pretty much ready for us to start using that. So it's likely we'll, we'll flip over to that area and then come back here.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? I don't see anyone online. Is that correct? Anyone from the public? Please state your name and the city you're from.
Joe Purdy, I'm from Williamsburg, Iowa. Came right here for a quick moment. We could all stand if you want to. I pledge allegiance.
We are on the landfill cell, fiscal year 2020.
And don't talk over me, Mr. Mayor. I'm talking. It's public comment.
No, we, we are on, we are on.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of United States of America.
Excuse me, we are on 20, the landfill? Okay. So we're going to continue. Anyone else from the public?
Thank you. Have a nice day.
Anyone else from the public like to address this topic? Seeing no one. I'm going to close the public hearing. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Second, Taylor.
Moved by Weiner, seconded by Taylor, and council discussion.
Learned a lot.
Yeah.
All right. Roll call, please.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. Item number nine is water treatment plant chlorine feeder system upgrade. Resolution approving project manual estimate of the cost for the construction of the water treatment plant chlorine feeder system upgrade project. Establishing amount of bid security to accompany each bid, directing city clerk to post notice to bidders, and fixing time and place for receipt of bids. I'm going to open the public hearing and welcome.
Good evening. John Brisk of the Water. So this is the. Chlorine upgrade project. I don't have a presentation for it. I'd just like to speak about it briefly. So the scope of this project is to replace the chlorine feeder system. The components have reached design end of life, about 20 years. Plant's been open for about 20 years. And also to remove the defunct ammonia feeder equipment. The estimated opinion of probable construction cost is 192,000. Design and inspection costs are about 83,000. And the budget for this is in the water fund at 315,000. All drinking water is required to have a disinfectant residual in it before it leaves our treatment facility. Chlorine is the most ubiquitous way of doing that. Chlorine itself is inherently dangerous. And this gaseous chlorine system is actually quite ingenious in its design and it's definitely time for it to be upgraded. The way it's fed is through, we get it delivered in one-ton cylinders, but they actually weigh 3,777 pounds. It's a little trivia fact they like to give you when you're getting your licenses for this. But the way it works is that cylinder is very robust so that it can't be damaged. From there, it goes through a vacuum actuated regulator. And then the rest of the system, until it is in the feedwater, is all under vacuum. That's inherently safe. So if there's any puncture to the system, you don't get a full release from that cylinder. The regulator on the tank actually closes itself off because it doesn't sense that vacuum pressure anymore. From there, it's ejected into a water stream. That water stream is then modulated into the drinking water where we put the chlorine and then that chlorine is given time to react within our chlorine contact tanks. And then we pump that out of our clear wells into the system with a slight residual in it, just in case anything else gets into the system when it's out in the distribution system. So we expect to finish the formal bidding process yet this year and finish construction early in 2023. We look forward to having the project complete.
Great. Any questions?
Us or?
No. From council to John?
I just have a question. A, I'm, I'm looking at the memo here and, or the resolution, sorry. And it says the ammonia feed system has not been used recently. So what is that, number one? And then number two, why hasn't been used recently?
Yeah, so ammonia is used to, well, chlorinaminate. So you can mix the ammonia in with the chlorine, which then creates chloroamines, which is another form of disinfectant and is used to reduce the amount of chlorine you use, but it also has unwanted side effects with disinfection byproducts and potential corrosion issues in the system that have been linked to like lead releases in Washington DC's water system. So it was installed initially in the water treatment facility. It was never used as a disinfection system and has since sat unused for these 20 years. And we've scavenged parts from it because a lot of the parts are similar to continue to make the chlorine system function. So at this point, it's non-functional and won't ever be functional and actually presents more of a hazard as it is than just getting it out of there.
All right. Seeing no more questions. Thank you. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? The water treatment plant chlorine feeder system upgrade. Seeing no one. I'm going to close the public hearing. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved. Burgess.
Second, Weiner.
Moved by Burgess, seconded by Weiner, and council discussion. Roll call, please.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes. Motion passed at seven to zero. Item number 10 is ARPA UI Labor Center Construction Apprenticeship Opportunity Program. This is a resolution authorizing the Merit to sign a state and local fiscal recovery fund, grant agreement with the University of Iowa Labor Center to administer the quality pre-apprenticeship program. Could I get a motion to defer to the next meeting on 11/15/2022?
So moved. Taylor.
Second, Weiner.
All right. And this has just been referred, been requested to be deferred so that some final preparation can be made between the city and the University of Iowa Labor Center. Roll call, please.
Weiner?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes. Motion passed at seven to zero. Item number 11 is public measure number one, the keep and bear arms constitutional amendment ballot referendum. Resolution opposing public measure number one, the keep and bear arms constitutional amendment ballot referendum. Could I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved. Alter.
Second, Weiner.
Moved by Alter, seconded by Weiner. And, all right, who wants to, was there someone planning to lead in this topic of discussion? No? All right. Great. So this is the right to bear arm that is going to be on, on the ballot in November, on the general election ballot. And I know that council has some discussion about this and also that we have the, the resolution from the council opposing this. What we're going to do is we're going to open this up for public comment and then we'll have the council come and give some discussion after. So welcome. Anyone from the public? We'll have three minutes or less to talk on this topic. Welcome.
Thank you. And last time I was here, Mayor Teague, you weren't here. Congratulations on, on your wedding.
Thank you.
My name's Temple Hyatt. I live here in Iowa City. And since I was here last, I just wanted to pass along to the council that the Iowa City Community School District School Board has publicly published a letter to the editor in opposition of public measure one. The Johnson County Board of Supervisors passed a resolution opposing public measure one. Janet Linus spoke in opposition. The Cedar Rapids Community School District and the Lynn County Board of Supervisors both have passed resolutions opposing public measure one. And the Lynn County Attorney and the Lynn County Sheriff's co-wrote a letter to the editor encouraging the public to vote no. So I appreciate the council's time in considering this issue and the importance that it, that it has in impacting our communities and the decisions that, that we can make to keep our, our schools and communities safer. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else like to address this topic? Seeing no one in person or online. Council discussion.
So I appreciate MOM's demand action activism on this. I, I wanted to say a few things, one of which is that we, I do not want the state to be in the position where we cannot pass reasonable, common sense gun legislation. I would like to, for us to be able to save the lives of those who are potentially suicidal. I would like us to be, to be able to save the lives of those who are victims of domestic violence. I do not want our kids to have to do active shooter drills. I'd rather have them like learning normal things in school. So Temple Hyatt mentioned the, the, one of the editorial, I would quote from, from the two Lynn County elected officials, I would just quote a couple of brief passages. They said, "The passage of public measure one would strike down laws on the books that prosecutors use to hold gun offenders accountable. It would prevent our children and grandchildren from passing reasonable gun legislation and regulations in the future." This is not the Second Amendment. We actually already have the Second Amendment from the US Constitution. The, and the strict scrutiny part of this public measure does not mean stricter gun laws. It means little to no gun laws could be enforced. And finally, I would quote them where they say, "The gun amendment is not about freedom. It's about more gun violence. The gun amendment is not about embracing rights. It's about seizing power from future generations." And our sheriff told me that this is, this effort is a solution without a problem. It will do nothing to enhance public safety or make anything better for Iowans. It will likely have a ripple effect that creates a barrier for any future gun laws and jeopardize standing convictions.
Thank you, Counselor Weiner. I just would like to add, to remind people to flip the ballot over to be sure to vote no on this.
I don't have any prepared remarks, but I will just say that I am appalled that this is on the ballot, given the fact that we already have the Second Amendment, so there's no need to do anything more about that. And yet, this is on the ballot and it is considered more important to provide more power, more gun power, quite literally, than women and girls have over their own bodies. It appalls me.
I wanted to, just to agree with, I think it's been said here tonight and to point out, somebody had mentioned that this is not the Second Amendment. And so I think that's, I think that's important for people to know that when Iowa Republicans were pushing this through, Iowa Democrats actually said, "Okay, well, let's just do the Second Amendment," verbatim from the US Constitution. And Iowa Republicans felt that that didn't go far enough. So if anybody says this is just codifying the Second Amendment into Iowa law, it is absolutely not that. So yes, I, I will be looking very much forward to voting for this resolution, asking people to vote no on this. And thank you, of course, to MOM's Demand Action and everybody who's taken a stand against gun violence.
Yeah. Thank you all for your words and your advocacy. I think this is incredibly important and certainly there's, I think, a lot of misinformation about there, out there about what this proposed amendment is. And just a reminder that we, we do not need this for even those who would want, if you look at what happened and the changes in legislation without this amendment, Iowa got rid of, you know, permit, carrying gun permits for carrying concealed carry. And it's just the restrictions on our ability, for example, to try and control firearms within our buildings. This would go even further and, and limit not just our, but as Counselor Weiner mentioned, the state legislature's ability to have just the most basic, common sense regulations that the vast majority of people approve of. So please vote no.
What about the police violence on the.
Any other comments by council? Roll call, please.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. Could I get a motion to accept correspondence?
So moved. Thomas.
Second, Alter.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed at seven to zero. Item number 12 is assessment schedule. Resolution adopting an assessment schedule of unpaid mowing, cleanup of property, snow removal, sidewalk repair, and stop box repair charges and directing the clerk to certify the same to the Johnson County Treasurer for collection in the same manner as property taxes. Could I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved. Burgess.
Moved by Burgess.
Second, Alter.
Seconded by Alter. All right. Public discussion. Anyone from the public like to address this topic?
What topic is it?
It is assessment schedule. Seeing no one. Council discussion. Roll call, please.
Burgess?
Yes.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. I hear a sound. Will someone please silence the sound? Thank you. We're still in council meeting. We're at item number 13, which is council appointments. Applicants must reside in Iowa City and be 18 years of age unless specific qualifications are stated. 13A is planning and zoning commission. Planning and zoning commission has one vacancy to fill an unexpired term upon appointment through June 30th, 2023. And it does have a gender requirement, which is male. And we have three applicants which identify as male.
I'd put forward Chad Wade.
Okay.
I agree with that. He's been in the Iowa City area for over 43 years, it sounds like, and has a very good knowledge of the PNC Committee.
I can support that.
I can support it. I will just throw out Ty Bopp.
Yes, those were two that both jumped out at me, although I don't have a strong preference one way or the other.
I was good, I believe. He was one, he hadn't been in Iowa City very long, though. So it was interesting that after a short time, he's interested in serving on a commission, which is, which is great.
Yeah. Love seeing that.
So it sounded like Chad has sufficient support? Applicants must reside in Iowa City and be 18 years of age unless specific qualifications are stated. 13A is Planning and Zoning Commission. Planning and Zoning Commission has one vacancy to fill an unexpired term upon appointment through June 30th, 2023. And it does have a gender requirement, which is male, and we have three applicants which identify as male.
I'd put forward Chad Wade.
Okay.
I agree with that. He's been in the Iowa City area for over 43 years, it sounds like, and has a very good knowledge of the PNC Committee.
I can support that.
I can support it. I will just throw out Ty Bopp.
Yes, those were two that both jumped out at me, although I don't have a strong preference one way or the other.
I was good, I believe. He was one, he hadn't been in Iowa City very long, though, so it was interesting that after a short time, he's interested in serving on a commission, which is, which is great.
Yeah, love seeing that.
So it sounded like Chad has sufficient support? Yes, all right. So Chad Wade, could I get a motion to appoint to the Planning and Zoning Commission?
So moved, Taylor. Second, Burgess.
Moved by Taylor, seconded by Burgess. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed, a seven to zero. Item number 14, announcements of vacancies new. Applicants must reside in Iowa City and be 18 years of age unless specific qualifications are stated. Human Rights Commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term upon appointment through December 31st, 2022. Historic Preservation Commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term upon appointment through June 30th, 2024. Historic Preservation Commission, Woodlawn Avenue, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term upon appointment through June 30th, 2024. Housing and Community Development Commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term upon appointment through June 30th, 2023. Library Board of Trustees, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term upon appointment through June 30th, 2027. Applications must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, January 3rd, 2023. Could I get a motion to accept correspondence?
So moved, Alter. Second, Burgess.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed, a seven to zero. Item number 15, announcements of vacancies previous. Applicants must reside in Iowa City and be 18 years of age unless specific qualifications are stated. Board of Adjustment, one vacancy to fill a five-year term. Board of Appeals, two vacancies to fill a five-year term. Climate Action Commission, three vacancies to fill a three-year term. Human Rights Commission, three vacancies to fill a three-year term. Parks and Recreation Commission, two vacancies to fill a four-year term. Public Arts Advisory Committee at Large, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Senior Center Commission, two vacancies to fill a three-year term. Applications must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, November 8th, 2022. Airport Zoning Board of Adjustment, one vacancy to fill a five-year term. Airport Zoning Commission, Iowa City Representative, one vacancy to fill a six-year term. Historic Preservation Commission, Jefferson Street, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Vacancies will remain open until filled. Item number 16, a city council information. Any updates?
A couple of us had the, had the pleasure of attending the Human Rights Commission's Awards Breakfast last week. Really, really impressive group. And it's, it just, it's fantastic what people do for their local communities on a regular basis and in a wide range of issues, from housing to youth to women's health and much more than that. Also, wanted to remind everyone that there's an election next Tuesday and early voting is going on at the Public Library the next two days. You can vote early at the auditor's office and drive-through all week, including this weekend. And there's also early voting at the Coralville and North Liberty Libraries this coming weekend.
It is totally inappropriate for you to be playing that during council meeting.
Sorry about that. I'm trying to get Martin Luther King off my phone.
Please, we're conducting a meeting here, thank you. Comments?
Just gonna say too, early voting, just add my voice to that. And did the drive-through voting at the Johnson County Auditor's Office today, which is one of the early voting options. In and out in five minutes. It was really nice, really convenient. And that'll be every, every day from now until the day before the election day, I believe.
I may call on Council Burgess to speak to this a little bit more, but there was an incredibly cool event that was a pop-up from a lot of different local food trucks. And yes, and Council Harmsen, I just happened to be passing by and see it, but it looks like this is a new-ish event that hopes to be sustainable, is that right? Do you guys wanna? I just, I thought it was so cool, but I wasn't there for that long.
I just ate a lot of food, so that's all I know about it.
No, I believe it was some of our local food truck vendors came together and approached, I'm gonna get the old name, I can't remember the new name of the facility.
Purpose Place.
Thank you, Dream City. And they said, yes, you can use our parking lot. And they had all the food trucks lined up and it was a great way to fuel up before door knocking on Saturday, so.
Okay. I have asked you to turn off your device several times, several times. You are, the rules of the council is that you must be appropriate and respectful. Okay?
All right.
Now, if I have to ask you again, I'm gonna ask you to leave.
Stay on topic, Mayor Teague.
So please be silent while we, while we continue. Thank you. Any, any other, any, any other comments?
Redmond, no violence towards picketers, right?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna respectfully, I'm gonna respectfully ask you to leave the council meeting at this time.